Say what? This is all the tickets we saw. Good morning and welcome to the April 1st Board of Supervisors meeting. We will start out with the pledge of allegiance with Heidi Carpenter-Harris.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will start out with a proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month. We will start out. We're going to start out with a proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month. A proclamation of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity recognizing April 2025 as Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas every family and child are filled with tremendous promise and may all have a collective responsibility to prevent adverse childhood experiences, foster the potential of every child and promote positive childhood experiences and whereas positive childhood experiences such as loving caregivers and safe, stable, and nurturing relationships play a vital role in helping children thrive by mitigating trauma and the negative impact of adverse childhood experiences. And whereas the family who received the support they need before a crisis occurs are better equipped to provide safe, healthy, and nurturing environments leading to children who are safer, healthier, and more hopeful about their futures. Whereas childhood trauma, including abuse and neglect can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects throughout an individual's lifetime and impact future generations. Whereas strengthening families through access to economical, social, and community-based support reduces the likelihood of abuse and neglect and ensures children have the foundation for lifelong of well-being. Whereas effective child abuse prevention activities succeed because of the partnerships created between child welfare professionals, education, health, community, and faith-based organizations, business, law enforcement agencies, and families. Whereas communities must make every effort to promote programs and activities that create strong and thriving children and families. And whereas we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and contribute to promoting the social and emotional well-being of children and families in a safe, stable, and nurturing environment. Whereas investments in prevention initiatives such as home visiting programs, family strengthening policies, economic support, and community-based child abuse prevention efforts are essential to building safer, healthier communities for children and families. Whereas prevention remains the best defense for our children and families. Now therefore, the Trinity County Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim April 2025 as Child Abuse Prevention Month and calls on all citizens to recognize this month by dedicating themselves to the task of improving the quality of life for all children and family. Duly passed and adopted on the first day of April 2025 by the Board of Supervisors of Trinity County.
Good morning Chair, members of the board. Liz Hamilton, Health and Human Services Agency Director. Thank you for reading that proclamation and allowing us to come and bring community awareness to child abuse prevention. Health and Human Services on behalf, we host a Child Abuse Prevention Council that is a multidisciplinary group and we come together many times throughout the year and coordinate services that are offered throughout the county in the space of child abuse prevention, bringing awareness for families. In the month of April, it's a national endeavor that we're participating in. And so today, this being one of our first activities of the month, we also have on April 4th a Wear Blue campaign that highlights child abuse prevention. On Friday, April 11th, our team will be participating in the Reaching Board event that is brought to you by your prevention with substance abuse for youth. And that is where we have hundreds of our sixth through eighth graders come together for this event and the Child Abuse Prevention Council does a cyber safety and anti-bullying education for kids in that group, which is really important for just their online safety. We're all aware of those concerns. And then Saturday, April 12th, we will be participating at Loudoun Park at the Little League Field, offering parenting resources and other information via one of our social workers who's here today as well, Sierra Rogers. So it really is a call for all of our community to be aware in offering support to families with young children and just having that awareness and encouragement. Prevention and early intervention is a way to address the concerns before they promote up. There are studies that show early intervention, even an example of just home visiting, can reduce a family coming into a more formal system like child welfare by up to 50%. So we know that these interventions work, supporting families works, and we just thank you for your time and recognition of this important topic.
Thank you.
I move to approve the proclamation as presented.
One second.
May I say something? I just want to say thank you so much. In his letter to Theophilus, Luke wrote, "It would be better for someone to have a millstone tied about their neck and their hands and feet be tethered and for them to be thrown into the deepest sea than to hurt a child." And then even onward, it says that it would be better that you would not even be born if you were the type of person that would hurt a child. And I just thank you so much for keeping your eyes on that. And abuse, I know we all have an image because of what Hollywood tells us abuse looks like, but abuse can happen on accident from an over-tired mom. It can happen on accident from an over-frustrated father. It can happen on accident by an aunt who's raising her sister's kids. I mean, all these variabilities in life that wear and tear down the adults and make them weak and tired oftentimes become manifest in in hard behavior towards children. One of the things I like to tell young moms is, "Don't forget your little one's experiencing this for the very first time. Those questions aren't annoying, it's just a world they've never seen before." And take the time to, give yourself the time to answer their little questions and to hold their little hands and to lay by them at night when they go to sleep. I can't imagine in my mind ever making a choice to harm a child. And I fear for anyone that I come in contact with who has, because they're precious and they need to be taken care of all the way up and through their teen lives, because even though you're big, sometimes you're still little on the inside. And so I thank you so much for taking care and keeping an eye out for our families and for our children in our community.
Thank you, Heidi.
Supervisor Gogan? Supervisor Litwiler? Supervisor Cox? Supervisor Brownfield? Supervisor Carpenter-Harris?
Okay, we will now proceed. We'll now move into presentations. County Minister of Office received a presentation from Barbara Hayes on the Golden State Connect Authority Last Mile Round Two Federal Funding Account Application on behalf of Trinity County.
Thank you Chair. Barbara should be online and we'll pull up her presentation slides that were also attached to the board item. Barbara, we'll go ahead and turn it over to you for the presentation and then to address any questions the board may have.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Thank you Chair and supervisors for the invitation to speak with you this morning about broadband. And I'm going to go back in time for just a few minutes here to kind of set the stage for discussion about the opportunity that we're facing today. So as you can see here, and I hope you can see my slide, as you can see here, back in July of 2021, by unanimous vote of both Houses of the State Legislature, SB 156 was signed by Governor Newsom. And it, as noted on the slide here, was historic on many fronts. First of all, it dedicated $6 billion in investment into infrastructure for broadband across California. And perhaps as important as the dollar amount, which is historic not only for California but across the US at the time, there were a few non-monetary items that were big wins here as well. So first of all, the state, as part of the $6 billion, invested across four different programs. The first being for state open access middle mile infrastructure. Open access means that when infrastructure exists, providers, not just a single provider, but a number of providers can be invited onto the network to compete for customers and deliver service. So it's very much the same model, and we're going to talk about it here going through, it's the same model that Golden State Connect Authority is proposing, is that in this case, the state builds and/or leases open access middle mile infrastructure that anybody can tie into, which was landmark in California because before SB 156, if a provider built middle mile infrastructure, it belonged to that provider and the likelihood of them sharing was very slim because they would have lost a competitive advantage. So in this case, it really set a new model for California in a big way in that the state is now involved. Under SB 156, the state committed to 8,700 miles of middle mile infrastructure, and you'll see a visual of this in just a moment. But think of middle mile as the part of broadband infrastructure that connects long distances. And then what happens is last mile providers connect to that middle mile to deliver service between the middle mile infrastructure and the location or the customer. So the state now again is getting into middle mile infrastructure for the first time under SB 156 and opening what they have created or leased, opening it wide for all different providers to connect to. The next big pot of money was $2 billion of the $6 billion went into what is called the Federal Fund Account or FFA Last Mile. And again, last mile is the connection between the middle mile and the address. It was originally called the Federal Fund Account because back in 2021, the state placed federal monies into that account. It's important in this environment to recognize that those federal dollars have been moved out of this account and replaced with general fund dollars, state general fund dollars, over the past few budget cycles between July of 2021 and the current fiscal year. So the identity of those dollars now is predominantly state money. There's about a quarter of the dollars are still federal, but those are dollars that have not been subject to pause or pullback, and those dollars are encumbered in projects, so they're at this point safe. So it's important to realize that while it's called the Federal Fund Account, really it's comprised of state dollars. The 750 million loan loss reserve was a big one. This is again a new model for California. Quite honestly, it was created in statute because of the efforts of Rural County Representatives of California. And in fact, the language in the bill was written by our General Counsel. The loan loss reserve set aside originally 750 million for local governments, tribes, and nonprofits, not private companies, but those three that I listed, to apply for these dollars to use as security for the issuance of debt to build public infrastructure. And we're going to talk about that program in just a moment. And then the last of the four programs that was created was $50 million allocated to what is called the Local Agency Technical Assistance or LADA Program. This made available up to $500,000 per applicant and eligible applicants for local governments and tribes, up to $500,000 with no match requirement to do pre-broadband deployment planning work. And there were, this pot of money was oversubscribed. And you'll see in a minute that we assisted in applying for and managing 39 grants under the LADA Program for our member counties. Before I leave this slide, I also want to call out the second bullet there on the right, that for the very first time ever in statute, local governments, specifically counties, were permitted to own, operate, maintain broadband networks. And this is important in many ways, as speaking to Trinity County. And we are an organization here at Rural County Representatives of California, also known as RCRC, that represents 40 of the state's 58 counties. So upon the strategic direction of the Rural County Representatives of California Board of Directors back in the fall of 2021, following the passage of SB 156 with those key provisions now included, we created an affiliate entity called Golden State Connect Authority. Golden State Connect Authority is a joint powers authority and all Rural County Representative of California member counties, and there are 40 of them all shown in blue here on the map, were invited to join and become members of Golden State Connect Authority. Again, all those in blue, all 40 member RCRC counties took it upon themselves to become members of Golden State Connect Authority, Trinity County among them.
Pause for a minute. It seems like you're referring to a map you think we're looking at and we're not.
Oh, can you not see my slides?
Thank you.
Can you see my slides?
Now we can.
We've been seeing your slides all the time, Barbara. It's just you were speaking to the information on the first slide and Supervisor Litwiler was wanting to take a peek at the map you were referring to, so we're good.
Great. So on your screen now should be a map that represents all 40 of the states of RCRC's member counties, which as I mentioned, did become members of Golden State Connect Authority. And our program of work under Golden State Connect Authority included those three bullets below that you see. We created through a grant with the US Department of Commerce Economic Development Administration 25 broadband strategic plans for counties that opted in to that grant with us. We've provided technical assistance on some of the programs that you just saw that were created under SB 156, the LADA Program, and we're going to talk here in a moment about the Federal Fund Account Program, and help counties apply for those programs, our member counties. And then the last bullet there is the one that kind of leads into what we're going to talk to today about the opportunity before Trinity County. And that is that Golden State Connect Authority, as a joint powers authority representing counties that you see there on your screen, we are going to deploy an open access last mile municipal, because we're a local government, broadband network. And what, again, open access means, kind of think of airports where local governments finance, construct, own, operate, maintain airports, and then the airlines use the airport and they pay a fee to the local government. And then we, the flying public, also pay a fee when we buy a ticket. An open access broadband network is very much the same as that model where we, as a local government, Golden State Connect Authority, on behalf of our member counties, will deploy the infrastructure, we will finance, construct, own, operate, and maintain it. We will invite providers onto the network to compete for customers, thus creating choice for customers in rural California. And then each customer that signs up as a portion of their bill, they will pay a fee back to Golden State Connect Authority for the benefit of using that network. I should mention that Golden State Connect Authority is focused on building fiber networks. So we are not getting involved in fixed wireless or satellite, although both of those modalities need fiber in order to operate. So we'll talk about that in just a moment because those are important opportunities in rural California. So on this slide, you can see what Golden State Connect Authority has done over the last two and a half years with respect to those programs that we mentioned that were created under SB 156, specifically in our member counties. So under the FFA Program, again, the Federal Fund Account Last Mile Program, we submitted 37 applications representing the 30 counties that you see listed there in blue and the seven cities that are listed in gold. And you can see what those applications represented. Similarly, we submitted 37 matching organizations for those same 37 FFA Last Mile Program applications under the Loan Loss Reserve Program. Because our model of financing consists of Golden State Connect Authority issuing tax-exempt funds for a portion of the project financing and then filling in the delta, the difference between what's financeable or supportable by those bond issuances and the total project cost, we're filling in with grant dollars. And that's what's represented there. On the right-hand side of the slide in the blue box are the awards that Golden State Connect Authority has received under the Federal Fund Account Last Mile Round One Awards. And this is an important distinction because what we're going to talk about next, you'll notice there that Trinity County is shown in gray. You all did not opt in to participate with us in Round One. And Round One consists of awards that were made by the CPUC, the California Public Utilities Commission, to 52 of the state's 58 counties. And what remains, what remains are the six counties that you see here on this slide that are officially, as of February 20th, by decree of the California Public Utilities Commission, advancing to what is now known as Round Two of the Federal Fund Account Last Mile Program. Round Two consists of these six counties that did not receive any awards in Round One. And of the six counties that you see on your screen here, Trinity, Calaveras, Monterey, and Inyo are all Golden State Connect Authority member counties. In Round One, Golden State Connect Authority did apply for projects in Monterey and Calaveras. We did not apply for projects in Inyo or Trinity, again, because the counties did not opt in to participate with us. But in Round Two, through conversations with county leadership, we are going to be applying for Round Two opportunity here in Trinity County. The interesting thing about the Federal Fund Account Program is that you can apply for areas that are, the goal of the program is to get to unserved addresses, and unserved, you see there on your screen, is the distinction of 25 over 3 megabytes service or less. In the Federal Fund Account Program, you can also include what are deemed to be served addresses to the extent that you can justify including them, either through technical or financial reasons. Technical would be, for example, if you had to go through a served area to get to unserved, you're allowed to pick up those addresses and include them in your application. And for financial reasons, if you need to increase the number of customers that you pass, that might be another reason. So Golden State Connect Authority is working with our consultants right now to identify areas that need service that are unserved in Trinity County that we can include in our FFA, Federal Fund Account Round Two Application on behalf of Trinity County. So I apologize for not being able to show you that map. We're still working on it. There's a lot of analysis that goes into it. But suffice it to say, our goal is to get to as many unserved addresses as possible with our fiber open access network. The application window for the Federal Fund Account Round Two Program, the opening of it has not been announced, but we're anticipating that it may be next week or the week after. It will likely be in the month of April, and the window will be open for two weeks. That is something that the Public Utilities Commission has conveyed to us, so it'll be a really quick turn. And I want to thank Trent and Supervisor Cox for their help in working through this conversation with me to convey their desire for us to apply for project dollars in Trinity and to round up letters of support from businesses, tribes, and other local governments within Trinity that will comprise an important part of this application. The expected award recommendations, once the applications are submitted in April, the CPUC, the Public Utilities Commission, will review those applications. There's a lot of back and forth and questioning and clarifying of content of the applications that will take place over the ensuing months. And the CPUC has indicated that they will make their recommendations for awards in these six counties in the August or September timeframe. So we are working on the Federal Fund Last Mile Round Two Opportunity for Trinity at present. Now I want to switch just briefly over to another opportunity that we're pursuing, and that is the BEED Program, which is, as you see there, it's referred to, BEED is an acronym that stands for Broadband Equity Access and Deployment. This is a national program that falls under the US Department of Commerce, specifically within the National Telecommunications and Information Agency. It was a $42.5 billion program nationwide, and allocations were made to each state and territory across the US. California's allocation under the BEED Program, as you see there, is $1.86 billion. The goal of this program is different, and that's why I went into a little bit of detail to talk about the FFA Program, because this program is a little bit different. So the goal is to provide service to every, and I should have put in there, unserved and underserved location in the state with these dollars. As you can well imagine, 1.86 billion, while it's a lot of money, it's not enough in all likelihood to get this job. it's not, it's not enough, in all likelihood, to get this job done, to, to suffice this goal. The applications are open statewide. So under the federal fund account program, you applied on a county-by-county basis for projects within that county. This is not that model. This model, you select census block groups across the state of California. And each non-contiguous census block group is an individual application. So by way of example, on the maps that you're looking at there, you can see within Trinity County there are black lines. Those denote the census block groups under the BEED program within Trinity County. The blue line is the, the state middle mile that runs along Highway two ninety-nine through Trinity County. So again, going back to middle mile, you need access to some middle mile to be able to light up or provide connections via last mile. So that blue line is very important. Moving across the screen, left to right, you see the red dots denote unserved locations and the orange dots are underserved locations. BEED dollars can only be used to provide service to the red and the orange dots under the BEED program. And then the far right map there that you see with the green dots, those are the locations within Trinity County that are considered served. So an important item to note is that as you look at the census block groups in Trinity, they are, as they are across California, they are large areas. Under the BEED program, when you apply to provide service within a census block group, you must serve one hundred percent of the un- and underserved locations within that census block group. So by way of example, if you look at the two northernmost census block groups there in the tip of, to the northeast in Trinity County, you would pick up cluster along the middle mile line. But you would be required, whoever the applicant is, to serve those red dots in the far north of the, of Trinity County as well. So as you can imagine, it becomes very expensive. And maybe fiber isn't the best modality by which to serve those, those far away locations. So we have to be very careful and very strategic about which census blocks we apply for under BEED because of that requirement that you have to provide service to one hundred percent of the locations. Also, within the BEED program, there is a requirement that twenty-five percent of the project costs come in the form of cash match. Now, that's, that fits with our model. Again, because I mentioned that we issue tax exempt bonds for a portion of the financing, the financial stack within each of our, our project areas. But that is a big hurdle for many to, to, to cover, to, to, to get across. So that's another important component of the BEED program. And then my last slide, before we go to any questions, is again, another map of the state of California. In terms of priority for what we are doing here at Golden State Connect Authority with, with all, with the overlapping of FFA last mile round two application and the BEED program application, you can see there, the application windows are likely to overlap. We have prioritized our FFA round two counties as our first priority here at the staff level to get those applications complete and submitted. And then the second priority will be the BEED program applications in the priority order that you see there. So priority two are those seven awards that we have received under FFA round two, I'm sorry, FFA round one. And then priority number three, which includes Trinity, under the BEED program would be FFA round two counties. And then the last priority is adjacent counties to our FFA round one and two counties. So you can see the, the different colorations there and what, which counties are in play. The reason that we're taking this priority, of course, is because the FFA round two creates a wonderful opportunity to build upon our strong round one foundation. And then the BEED program priorities are, as you can see there on the map, we're trying to build regional clusters. Because strategically, this will help us on the operation and maintenance side to, to control costs, rather than having counties kind of hither and yon. So we're really approaching this from a very strategic point of view, not only on the application, but also all the way through the financing and build portion to the operation and maintenance of the system once built. And with that, I will stop sharing my screen and I'm happy to take any questions.
Barbara, thank you very much. Does the board have any questions?
Thank you very much. I, I think the first thing is, I noted that you said, Trinity County did not opt in for the first round. And I've sat through several presentations and I don't remember us hearing about something that we said, well, let's not do anything. So what, what did we miss? Or did we actively choose not to?
Barbara, go ahead and you can.
Yeah, at the time, in the summer and fall of twenty twenty-three, we did reach out to Trinity County to see if you all were interested in having us submit an application. And at the time, you were going through kind of a tumultuous time with your CAOs, there were, there was a lot of change. And at the time, there was a decision, no, to not have Trinity County participate with Golden State Connect Authority.
And Barbara, maybe add to that, because it's my belief that a piece of that was to do with the fact that we did not participate as the other thirty-nine counties did in the same way that they did with our LADA grant. The other counties used that for combined strategic planning. We used ours to look at a section of our South County in, in an individual way. And that outcome then led the other counties to move into their funding applications, whereas we were really kind of doing ours in a standalone model.
That is correct.
Thank you. The next is, you know, I've, I've heard through all these presentations that the goal of these programs is to get everyone access to internet broadband in the way that you, you've defined it here. And yet, it, it, and please, this is not a criticism of you, I'm trying to understand because I, I keep hearing things that just make me scratch my head. But then it always appears that, in the end, it comes down to if you can find the money. So the last update we had from someone else said, well, we were going to go up and down three, but now there's no money, so we won't. And, well, there is this money to go reach all of these orange and red dots, but only if you've got somebody that's got twenty-five percent match. And the reality is, the reason that there won't be somebody with a twenty-five percent match is that we are so rural, so difficult to serve, and therefore, the ones that most needed to benefit from the programs. So I, I don't understand how this design is supposed to accomplish the goal. I, I have no doubt, in LA County and in many of these counties where there's big cities, we have none, there are people that will go, yeah, I can serve all those customers, sure, I'll find the twenty-five percent match, I'll make it up in no time. But we're left in the middle of nowhere. Supposedly, I would think, being the ones who, when everybody was pulling the heartstrings, these are the people we need to serve and we're not going to get served. So I, I'm ranting a little bit, but I'm also trying to understand, am I misunderstanding something or was this just designed in a way that really did not reflect the needs of our county?
No, you're, you're not misunderstanding supervisor. Each program does come with different requirements. As you saw, even between the BEED and the federal fund account program, different requirements, different participants, different areas of focus. I think what we're looking at in terms of rural California and Trinity absolutely falls under what I'm about to say next, is that fiber may not be the answer for every address. And these dollars, particularly under BEED, all prioritize, and, and FFA prioritize fiber, but with the understanding that fiber is not going to be the answer for every address. In some cases, fixed wireless might be a solution. In some cases, satellite might be a solution. Both of, well, the FFA last mile program that the CPUC is overseeing with, again, state dollars under SB one fifty-six, that focuses on fiber and fixed wireless. What you're going to see under BEED, I predict, is a lot of fixed wireless applicants and maybe even some satellite. Now, that's not the first priority for BEED, but if it makes financial sense, greater financial sense, that's what you'll see. So these two programs are rather unique in that, in, in the respect, first in terms of dollar amounts, funding and the billions of dollars. Here to, before the federal fund account SB one fifty-six and before the BEED funding, the state of California through the CPUC had various programs, much smaller dollar allocations, much more competitive. And before SB one fifty-six, really focusing on ISPs, incumbent service providers. And I'll talk, you know, you're looking, you're talking about AT&amp;T, I hold up my cellphone because they're my provider, but, you know, the, the big providers. And to your point, it really doesn't pencil for a profit-based shareholder laden organization to come into rural California. That's why SB one fifty-six is a game changer in the sense that it allows local governments or entities like Golden State Connect Authority and tribes to get into the game, so to speak, and to become network administrators or providers themselves and reach farther into rural California.
Okay, so it somewhat leads to my third question and maybe some more detail. So I was going to ask, how does satellite services even play into this? Because when we say, do people have access? Well, basically, unless you don't, unless you have too many trees on your property, you can get something like a Starlink service and you can reach internet. It's probably not affordable for a lot of people in, in rural counties like this, but it gets there. So how does that availability and that economic reality play into meeting the requirements of these programs?
Satellite can, is an eligible modality for broadband delivery under the BEED program.
Is or is not, I'm sorry?
It is an eligible modality of delivery, service delivery, under the BEED program. So, so you may see a Starlink applying for BEED dollars in California.
And so they, their application would be to fund, I mean, they don't need more satellites to cover the couple of thousand other people in our county, they can, they can have hundreds of thousands. So would it be to lower the prices that they're charging? I'm trying to understand how Starlink would, would apply for those and why they would get the money.
Well, that's really up to Starlink, but they would have to put more satellites up if they were going to add customers. Most certainly. So they would apply for dollars. And as anybody else who, whichever census block group they applied to serve, they would be required to serve a hundred percent of the addresses within that census block. And they could use the money, in all likelihood, it would be to put more satellites up to provide continued service based on their model. Yeah, but it's really whatever Starlink applies for, to use their dollars, that, that's really up to them, yeah.
So I'm going to toss something in. You might not be able to see it, Barbara, but Supervisor Luke Weller is very frustratingly shaking his head and understandably so. And let me toss this in to see if it helps you. The reason that Barbara is here today is because of our participation in RCRC and because of their very proactive approach and their, well, just foresight and just hard work. They are creating a path for these forty counties to be able to create some broadband that, no, we have not seen that. And yes, we see the state, you know, SB one fifty-six and put the money in place. And then we see the rules that come with that. And then with those rules, the reality is that then limitations are created as with the census block, as an example. And so, yes, over the years, we have heard, oh, we're at a point where this hopeful project is going to go in and this particular provider has, we've sat in meetings and listened, looked at the maps and heard all of the positive things. And then the months roll by and it fizzles. And, well, the money wasn't there or the provider pulled out for various reasons. And so that is, I think, the frustration that you're feeling today and you're looking at this in a very global way. My encouragement would be for you to sort of hone your focus in on this one opportunity that is now before us because RCRC created Golden State Connect Authority and because of their expertise in the grant writing, because they have found ways to have the counties work together. So we are going to be in a regional approach with Glen and Tahima Counties, because they have already been awarded funds. So since we are a contiguous county, that makes our application stronger. And, and so this, this is one opportunity like the many others that have come and gone. But this one comes with, I believe, a lot more hope for success, because the CPUC has said each county should be awarded and we haven't been. And they're looking at the final six that remain. And RCRC, you know, four of those six are the members. And so, and so here we sit, kind of in, I think, a golden opportunity moment.
Okay, I think maybe just one example of how what we're talking about will be applied within Trinity County. Because I, I think I was listening and I heard things like, in municipal things, like airports, there is no physical structure in an airport in Trinity County that we're going to have wifi in that people will, you know, so it's like, okay, so.
No, 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 that's not what she meant.
I need to understand, in Trinity County, to hit the people that aren't getting service, what is the thing that we're talking about that is good? How's it going to work in Trinity County? Because I haven't heard anything yet.
Okay, so the, I can let Barbara explain herself. The airport wasn't saying that we have one. She was using that as an analogy.
Right.
Okay.
I'm just looking for an example that does have an analogy to Trinity County and I haven't heard it yet. I'm just trying to get an explanation of, yes, we have these money, we can do this application, we can do all these things, we can do the.
Where?
Where? Because I, I heard airport, okay, that doesn't work. So what is the where, what is the how for Trinity County?
No, again, when you say, I heard airport and we don't have one, she wasn't saying that we have an airport. She was likening it to an infrastructure that would come and be in place for service providers to come and compete for that now placed infrastructure to serve individual addresses. So the where is still under its scoping to determine where would the location be that our application will be strongest? Barbara, I'm going to stop talking and let.
Yeah, no, no, you're doing a great job. So Supervisor, what, what, our application would include unserved locations, houses, businesses, in an as-yet-undetermined, because we're doing the analysis now, project area. So what it would mean to those unserved locations or all, all location within our federal fund account project area, should we be lucky enough to be awarded the grant under the federal fund account program, is we would provide that open access network access to all the addresses within our project area. So if your home, by way of example, is within our proposed project area, we win the award, you would have fiber to your home, should you desire it and should you sign up for Golden State Connect Authority service. And then you would have a number of providers to choose from at different program speeds and different price points. So hopefully that, that provides a little clarity. And similarly, under the BEAD program. If we are to find a project area under the BEAD program with a census block project area within Trinity County. And are lucky enough ultimately to receive the award, again, all the addresses within that. Census block, in the case of the BEAD program, would receive access to Golden State Connect Authority, open access. Fiber to their address, network accessibility.
And the timing of the not BEAD funding?
Yeah, so that was the application window is anticipated to open in April and award announcements per the CPUC. Are expected in the August, September timeframe. And it would, in all likelihood, be that construction would begin. Following spring.
Okay, so that means sometime in the next three to four weeks, Trinity County's. Part of an application would be submitted.
It means that Golden State Connect Authority would submit an application under the federal fund account program. For project areas within Trinity County, yes.
Okay, and so. If we only have a few weeks left, I'm assuming we've done a lot of work. Or we're very quickly going to do a lot of work to have an application.
Connect Authority is doing all of that work. That letter of support that I sent out and was requesting, we, we have four requirements. We need to provide them a point of contact. We need to provide them boots on the ground awareness of, does what they're seeing on their maps match what we know to be on the landscape? We need to provide letters of support and we need to provide huts, locations where the hut, where the technology. Will sit in a space. Beyond those, they are literally doing all of the work.
Okay, and I get that they are doing all the work. I'm just saying the work is being done. And I'm trying to figure out, it sounds like there's decisions to be made about which locations will be served, where will this happen? And I'm trying to understand with two to three weeks left, how and when does either the public or this board? Have insight into what gets applied for on behalf of our county?
It'll largely be driven Supervisor by the data. So as I mentioned, the, the federal fund account program. Focuses on those unserved addresses. So we'll be, we are looking with our consultants at how we can maximize project areas to. Maximize the number of unserved addresses within our project area. And have it be technically and financially viable. So again, that middle mile access is important. We'll come off of the middle mile and try and, and get as many unserved addresses as we financially and technically can.
Okay.
Second. Okay, so we are in Southern Trinity, very, very rural, Southern Trinity.
Yeah.
So you're wanting locations, how are you finding those addresses? Are you wanting, were we supposed to gather? Interested addresses? Do you already do that within your, your realm? And is Southern Trinity a realistic spot for any future broadband? I mean, we, we are right above Humboldt, so. So if we, if we aren't, I would love to see some sort of satellite. Availability, you know, to, to the people that can't get access to broadband. So is there, and I know there's twenty five percent that we have to match. So I'm not sure how, you know, how that would work, but is that possible?
Well, I'll start with your first question first Supervisor. All of the data is available from the CPUC and map layers. That the CPUC has made available for use under the, under the federal fund account program. So we have everything that we need in terms of data. And we have an engineering team who is currently reviewing the data that gets us to the unserved addresses. In all likelihood, the Golden State Connect Authority project areas will likely, well. Will start along that middle mile, that highway two ninety nine infrastructure, because again, we need to have the middle mile connectivity. In order to light up the last mile component, which is our component of the fiber network. So I think what we'll see is more north county or north central county defined project areas. In answer to your question about south county specifically, that's a tough one because it is so very rural. And it probably is better served by fixed wireless and/or satellite opportunities. Golden State Connect Authority is building a fiber network. So again, the cost of building fiber to remote addresses doesn't pencil. For a fiber network as well as it would for a fixed wireless or satellite opportunity. So the best of all possible circumstances, if I take off my Golden State Connect Authority hat and put on my Trinity County hat. Is you want to see as many, you want to see multiple applications. For the dollars that are available for projects within Trinity County under the federal fund account as possible. Because I think you would all want it to be very competitive. And have the CPUC evaluate as many opportunities as possible. There is a scoring rubric. That the CPUC uses to in effect rate or rate and rank all applications. And we, as well as other applicants, I assume, kind of build our project areas against that scoring rubric. Some of the things that are included on the rubric are, are you connecting to the state middle mile? Are you maximizing the number of unserved addresses? They're, they're good public policy related components that people design project areas to.
But you can see how frustrating it is for the very, very, very rural who are the underserved to. Probably most, most likely not have access. And you, you said something about Starlink. Which is something interesting and I don't know if you deal with the Starlink.
We do not.
End of it at all. So how would that be approached to do that?
Starlink is a private company, so they are an eligible applicant under these programs. Probably more so under B, just in terms of prioritization of technologies. They would apply specifically on their own, again, just like we would apply under B. For a specific census block group to cover one hundred percent. Now, are they going to apply? I don't know. Again, it's a private entity, so we'll have to wait and see who applies. I do absolutely feel the, the frustration and, and Trinity is not the only county to express it. I will say that with Golden State Connect Authority, two, two things for, for takeaways is, first of all, we are building. Or designing our networks to have very robust capacity around the edges of each of our. Project areas, those that have been approved and those that, that we will be applying for going forward. The reason for that is, as I mentioned earlier, fixed wireless and satellite both require fiber. In order to do backhaul. So the signal gets beamed up and, and down to the address, but it gets. Before the initial up beam and down, there's fiber involved in that before it goes up into the sky. Similarly, with fixed wireless, if it's point to point, there's fiber at the base of both of those towers. So. We're designing our networks to have that robust capacity around the edges to increase the opportunities for additional modalities. Fixed wireless and satellite to come off of the edges of our fiber network. To be able to reach farther out into our member counties. And I said there were two things and the other one has gone right out of my head right now, so I apologize, but. But we are designing in such a way that it will increase the opportunities for additional modalities to be used. For the much more remote areas. Thank you.
Supervisor Lou Weller, do you have a question?
The, this final question was how and when we will learn which areas will be addressed in the application made by Golden State Authority. On behalf of Trinity County.
As soon as I know Supervisor, I will share, share it with all of you and that should be in the next week. Again. Application window will open in April, so we're up against the wall right now. With defining those project areas, but I'm happy to share it as soon as, as soon as I have the information from our engineering team.
Okay, and so I, I guess just by that, then the answer that means we, we collectively have already authorized. Your organization to act on our behalf. You're not looking to pull together something and come back to the board for approval. We've already empowered you in some form. In some previous mechanism to do that.
Chair, may I make a comment?
Certainly.
So I provided authority for Golden State Connect Authority to pursue this grant obligation, obligation. Opportunity on our behalf. There is no financial commitment for it. There is very, very little commitment for it. From a staff perspective. And because we have, in my viewpoint, been left out. Of previous opportunities, we've, I felt this was an opportunity to at least have a. Foot in the door and be competitive for the FFA side of it. That is what the focus of today's discussion on is, is the FFA application. That window was expected to actually open this week. It will probably get pushed to next week. There is just a two-week period. That the applicants have to submit the information. So it's very short, fused. There is not going to be a lot of opportunities to come back to the county for any type of consensus or information. But I also want to be clear that what this is and what this isn't. This is not going to get. Service to my house. This is only going to lay the foundation, the infrastructure, if you will, for potentially service providers to come in. And use this backbone to provide a service to my house. So if we are successful to get some infrastructure in. The ground, then the county as a whole will have another. Opportunity and they, we collectively will need to work with service providers to. Encourage them to come in and provide service to our county. But I also don't want anybody to walk away from this with an expectation that everybody is going to be served by fiber in Trinity County. It will never happen. So let's not think it will. But there are other options, whether that's wireless or satellite, that could happen. And that's why you see on some of these maps that the CPUC has determined, because people do have access to satellites. Those are then served areas. So there's, there's lots of information, there's, there's tons of, of maps and data that are out there. But this is an opportunity, I believe, for us to at least have an application put in on our behalf. So we'll, we'll see what happens. You'll see that, you see the success rate of previous applications. There were thirty seven submitted, there were seven awarded. So we'll see what happens. Because we were one of six counties that they determined, CPUC just determined. That they're going to do a round two process. The thought is. Our odds are pretty good because they probably want to make sure that all counties are getting some fair share of this information. Now, Barbara mentioned that it would be beneficial or hopeful in her terms that this would be competitive and there would be other applicants. So I am aware of potentially one other applicant that is interested in putting in an application on our behalf. We had a conversation with them yesterday. But that is a private company, that is not driven by a county governance structure. But there is an interest in doing that. But again, it's, it's very location, community specific. It's not the entire county. In addition to that, next board meeting. You'll hear a presentation from Frontier. Frontier has differing, there's differing opinions about the service that Frontier has provided. In our county, but they are doing a private project in predominantly District Two. I would say a little bit of District One. But they'll come in, they'll show you some maps, they'll show you what they're doing. And that project is, is on, is broadband focused as well. And that is actually going to, that's scheduled to, to start. Construction, if you will, this summer. And it's a pretty short period, but they'll explain that next week. So there's lots of things happening in the broadband arena, lots of interest in this. And I think that this is just one step in the, a direction. That would potentially bring some revenue, some income into, or some, some. Capabilities, some infrastructure into the county.
Thank you, CEO Todd Hill, for that explanation. And Barbara, thank you very much.
I'm sorry.
Certainly Supervisor Carpenter.
Thank you so much for your time. I do appreciate that. I just need to, I just feel like I want to say a couple of things really quick for points of clarity. This opportunity to have an, an access to broadband. I like, I like that you said you're increasing the capacity on the edges. That's, that's helpful to me. It, that, that knowledge made this effort a little bit more palatable to, to me. To, to know that we're increasing at the end of that. I kind of see it almost like a cul-de-sac that many other lines can come off of the hub at the end. If they're increasing the, the strength at the, the end of the, the, the fiber. So a couple of things that I think I want to make sure of is that people are aware that. The, the idea of equity means equity to access. It doesn't mean that anyone's paying your bill for you. You will be one hundred percent responsible for whatever carrier. Jumps on this opportunity to, to link you to this fiber. I think sometimes people misinterpret that. That it's going to be something that's provided for them. No, you're given equity and accessibility, not. Someone's going to be providing this as a, as, this, these grants and these fundings are not free for us to be partakers of. Is that correct?
That is.
Are you there?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that we made that clear. And then also. I, I really appreciate CAO Todd Hill's comment and I understand the infrastructure need to provide a backbone. For everything to branch off of. In my mind, I kind of see it like a spinal column and then all these wires and different. Access points will come off of it to feed out into the greater body of the county. I, I happen to live on two ninety nine and we have been enduring the, the installation of broadband. Along with a lot of other work on two ninety nine for, I can't even remember when there wasn't something happening on that section of highway. And one of the things that I, I ask and I had, just have a concern about and it's just a thought and maybe there isn't an answer is. A lot of the businesses on two ninety nine and many people who live in, in that region already have a source of wifi. And so my question is that most of them satellite options have been taken on, but. I, I just, I'm looking at the, the differential between. Time. Installation. How many years that would take? And then how is it going to make my life better than what my satellite on the top of my building already does? Like, how is it going to be better for me when I look at the, the enduring time of, of more construction in my community? And more wait time on my roads? Like, I need to balance that somewhere to say, how much better is it going to be for me? Than having a Starlink on the top of my house or whatever. So that's something I'm thinking about. And then I'm also. I'm also interested in, has a rock kind of been thrown into the pond to determine? What's the appetite when we think of these additional servers, like the people who are going to put in the lateral lines? And go out into these pods of communities or out into our, maybe our volunteer fire departments that are alongside of the highway? What does the appetite look like out there for providers? Is there, do we have people chomping at the bit or is it, are we going to have to look for them? What is the appetite? Have you had an experience with that?
Yes. So in order of your questions, I was just making some notes here on your questions. So. The build time under the federal fund account program to build out the entire project area, wherever it is finally determined to be. The project must be complete within eighteen to twenty four months. So that gives you an, an idea of timeline. May it run longer, you know, dependent upon whether. May it run longer, you know, dependent upon whether winter weather. It, it may run a few months longer, but that's what people under the FFA program, regardless of who wins the award, are up against in terms of the required timeline. In reference to your, your, will I have better service question? Is on an open access network, that means that you're going to have multiple providers competing for your service. So that tends to create a competitive environment. In other areas where, where there is an open access network, you're looking at probably a 100 megabyte symmetrical service delivered via fiber for roughly $70 a month on an open access network. So I don't know what you're paying for Starlink, but the price point I would imagine is a little bit higher than that. You also, with a fiber network, are going to see a higher quality, faster speed and lower latency. So, you know, if you have weather or if it's a cloudy, cloudy sky or fire, smoke, you may see some increased lag times or latency on delivery of your service. That doesn't exist with fiber. So it could be pricing and then quality of service delivery will, will improve with fiber delivery. And then as far as providers on the network, to the point where if we're lucky enough to get Trinity, as Supervisor Cox mentioned, we would drop you into the regional cohort along with Tahima and Glenn, already awarded to Golden State Connect Authority. And we would seek providers on a regional basis. So it could be that, and, and we will put out an RFP and go through a selection process on a regional basis for providers. They'll have to hit certain service, customer service standards. And they have to be a going concern. It can't be, you know, Barbara's broadband in the, in my basement kind of thing. They have to have strong financials. So there are some qualifiers. But what we're really hoping to do is open it up to local providers, perhaps fixed wireless providers, who can come onto our network, who already are in the area. They can come onto our network. And in the case of the regional cohort, that would be Trinity, Tahima and Glenn, by jumping onto the Golden State Connect Authority network, they could now increase the size of their footprint, their service area footprint, using our infrastructure. So no capital expenditures on their part. They could increase their, their service area. Just the last point I'll, I'll make on the providers is yes, we have had a significant amount of interest from providers both within California and outside of California who are interested in being on the Golden State Connect Authority network.
Thank you very much for all of your answers. I appreciate your time.
Any other questions from the board? Barbara, thank you very much for your presentation.
You're very welcome.
And we will be getting back to you.
Thank you.
We now have a presentation from the US Forest Service. Looking back in town. Tell Ben to do a great job while you're away.
I will, thank you. Well, good morning, board. It's wonderful to see you on this nice snowy day. I'm used to, this is like Bernie's opening day of Little League that I lived through. I can't tell you how many times. So it's always nice to have some spring weather. All right, well, let me get started with letting you know that businesses proceeding with the US Forest Service on the Shasta Trinity National Forest are planning efforts, are still moving forward. We're still meeting with partners and, and getting work done with them. Recreation and getting our rec sites up and running or getting them ready to go. That work is continuing. You are probably aware that we have a new acting regional forester whose name is Jason Keiken. Jen Everline has retired effective yesterday. And Jason Keiken is typically the forest supervisor of the Stanislaus National Forest. So he is the acting regional forester. I want to say I was fortunate to get to attend a mill tour at Trinity River Lumber Company and how much I am always impressed by the, the technology, the hard work and the utilization of every single tree that goes into that facility. The leadership and the, and the hard work of the folks that keep that, that mill running is just really evident every time you visit there. So really appreciated my time there. Okay, so let me give you some updates on some planning. As you know, we got the Hyam Palm document signed. That was a 12,500 acre planning effort. Super excited about that. Expect implementation to start next week. So that I'm excited to get that going. Bowerman, I'm expected to get that signed this month. It's a CE along the Bowerman Ridge, so that should get signed this, sorry, this week, this month. Um, you know me, this month. Big Ranch will kick off and be scoped. Scoping will come out in May. So that's moving along. Junction City scoping should be out soon. That's a project we're working on with the Watershed Center. They're taking the lead on that. South Fork Mountain, they're reviewing the comments that we received during the scoping period. That's a, that's project is, we're working on with the Six Rivers National Forest and they're taking the lead on that while we take the lead on Big Ranch. WCF Phase Two, we're getting some ARC surveys done that were kind of missing. That was all we needed to get that authorized. Those ARC sites were underway. They'll be paused for weather while we wait for the snow to get off the ground. But those will continue. That, that NEPA should get signed or that part of the decision should be signed before summer as well. I have a meeting on Thursday to go over the North Trinity County project to meet with Sarah Acreage and the planning team and make sure we're all in alignment on that project and, and what's moving forward. So I'm excited about that. So going back with Hyam Palm, Bowerman, WCF Phase Two, those, if, when all those get signed prior to summer, that will give us 18,000 acres of NEPA coverage. So I'm, I'm just thrilled with that kind of pace and scale and, and the level that we're, we're finally getting to. Still not where we need to be, but getting there. Trainings, want to let you know that we're working to get not only our staff trained up, but inviting our partners to training. So on April 11th, we have a reports, how to write reports and some NEPA training for our staff. And we've, as we are going to continue to do, invited our partners to attend that training with us so that they can get up to speed as they help us with some of our NEPA planning efforts. The same is true the week of April 14th through the 17th. We have a timber readiness review where we'll be going over timber cell prep, timber contract administration, layout things. And I will be helping with that and we'll, and we've already invited our partners to attend that training as well. All right, so implementation. We've burned about 1,400 acres in pile burning. That will start to wrap up as we get closer to spring and, and things start to dry out theoretically. Next week, I talked about Hyam Palm. We're working on, on an implementation plan with CR Pacific Industries on their fuel break agreement that they got. Some of that first work will be implemented will be in the Bowerman project. So we're excited about that getting done or started. Super happy to see the Good Neighbor Agreement continues to move forward with the work being done in, on the Six Rivers, mostly around hazard trees and the fuels cleanup that comes along with that. So happy to see that being implemented. Pilot will be implemented this summer. More work will continue and the Watershed Center will be taking the lead on that. August Phase One and Two, we continue to get work done on that August Fire footprint under a large fuels contract that we have. That work will continue. We'll be picking up some work in McFarland. We'll probably be doing that in-house using our own dozer and our fuels crew. Be doing some of that work. We talked about Bowerman. Oh, West Side Plantation, looking to do some more work out in the West Side Plantation. That NEPA was authorized a few years ago. Moving on to recreation. I think I already told you, but we, we did a lot of cleanup work in Preacher Meadows Campground. We've done some work at Bridge Camp, the Fairview Boat Launch. We took 40 dump trucks worth of material out of the Fairview Boat Ramp area, fighting back the Scotch broom. And hopefully, we feel like we got it pinned down in a corner, but you know how it likes to come back. So it'll be great, should be great for this summer, though. Appreciate the efforts by not only our rec staff, but the Smart Center, one of our partners has been working really hard with us on that. They also worked on the Hayward Campground, so happy to see that getting cleaned up. Oh, and then we went out to, we were out at Pine Cove as well. Kind of a round two of fighting back the poison oak and the blackberry bushes there. So that work is continuing. Transfer of the lake is continuing. As you know, the responsibility and the management of Lewiston Lake and Trinity Lake, part of the national recreation area, will be transferring over to our office here on the west side. So Ben and I will be overseeing that. Let's see, that was three, four, oh, five, talked about training. Ben and I will be setting up meetings with our local fire advisors prior to the fire season coming along, just to make sure we've got all of our lines of communication ready to go, that everyone knows how to get ahold of everyone and that we kind of talk about expectations. And, and we want that to work as seamlessly as it has in the past. I'd like to not have to use it at all. But, you know, we tend to get some lightning and things. So I wanted to just make sure we're ready to go with that. Fire hiring has been going extremely well. We're expecting, we have one more round of, of fire hiring for our permanents that opens, I think, next week. But things are looking good. Our hotshots are staffed, fully staffed, as well as our engines are looking good as well. And our fuels crew is looking to be up to, fully staffed. I think those are the basic updates. I mostly wanted to let you know that we are continuing to, to get things done. We're, we're, we're pressing on. We know the work that needs to get done here in Trinity County. We know what's expected of us. We know what, what we want to get done for the people in Trinity County and on their national forests. And, and we're working diligently to, to get those things done. There's a lot of changes and, and some uncertainty in the system, but that hasn't stopped what we're doing locally. We continue to press on to get things done. So just wanted to give you that reassurance. All right, and I think with that, I, that's about it, all I have for notes. I am excited to, as I was looking at all of you, I'm, I made a list and I'm happy to say that we have work going in each and every one of your districts. And that Trinity County is, is, is challenging its terrain, the size. I'm well aware of how much of it is under federal management. And I, I feel good that I can say that we're doing work in each and every one of the districts. So I'm ready for your questions.
Board, have any questions?
I, I just want to acknowledge and make sure that folks know that Tara rearranged her schedule to make sure that she was able to spend some time with Heidi McHugh, Assemblymember Rogers Field Rep, when she was here. And I think that those connections and those conversations were really good. The, the, what do I want to say? She just laid a foundation of, of understanding for our county from forest service perspective, which was really important for Heidi to know and understand. And, you know, out of that, I saw Heidi jump on our Fire Safety Council meeting this last week. And so it's just indications that those conversations were meaningful and important. I just wanted to thank you for prioritizing that for us.
Happy to do it. It was, it was a good, a good day.
Rick?
Thank you. I've been talking to Kristy Larks. She's wonderful up there and, and you guys have been very visible up where we are. So thank you very much. That's a huge area. Yeah, thank you.
I just am super stoked about the Hyam Palm project and the Big Ranch project. I, I, I can't wait to see, you know, activity. I'm looking forward to that. And, and maybe once everything gets started, I'll jump in my car and go do drive-bys. I'm really looking forward to those, to those projects. And I know that the communities down river and then over the hill in Hyam Palm are looking forward to those as well. So good stuff, thank you.
Me too, yeah, absolutely.
And I just wanted to dig a little deeper on some of the, what sounds like very positive comments there. I, I heard that staffing for our fuels crew was looking good.
Yep.
And at one point, when all the uncertainty about funding, I was hearing, yeah, we'll have fire crews, but not maybe fuels crews. But you're feeling good about fuels crews to continue to support us this, this season?
Absolutely.
Great. And then the other is the recreation, because that was another concern. I think people thought, well, great, will our rec sites not be open because we don't have staff for them? Lots of concern is the federal funding roller coaster ride was going on. So what's your sense now of the funding we will have? And will you be able to staff the various sites that bring a lot of people into the county?
So the, as you know, the CR was signed. However, that, that hasn't made its way down to our level yet to know exactly what our budget is going to look like. But I can tell you that we've worked with our rec staff. We don't anticipate any closures. We may have to be flexible and, and have some, perhaps some limited or reduced services in some of the areas. But I also have been in contact with our fire staff and they have been willing to kind of adopt some of those rec areas with their, with their folks and help us keep, make sure we keep everything open. I'm really well aware of how important the recreation opportunities are here to Trinity County and to the economy. And so the staff and I have been prioritizing that. How can we, regardless of how the, the chips fall, how can we make sure that we're keeping as many amenities open as possible? Right now, I just don't have the problem in front of me to see what I'm solving for because it hasn't just trickled all the way down yet. But it is a priority for us to, to keep those open. I'll probably have some more information for you next trip to know if there's any impacts that specifically that I can speak to in, across the Shasta Trinity National Forest.
Thank you.
Yep.
And, and with regard to the recreation piece, I want to say thank you too for the Fairview cleanup. I've been asking for that for a, a good while and you got it done. So thank you. Didn't realize it would be 40 dump trucks. That was a lot more Scotch broom than I thought was there. But also we should highlight the fact that the passage, and I don't remember the, the bill number. Our marina fees will stay with our recreation district in order to provide funding. And I, I would be curious to know if you track that over time. I mentioned that to Supervisor Brooky and was wondering about numbers. But again, those numbers aren't something that are top of mind. But it'd be fun to know over time what that means to us. Our PUD lobbied heavily to make sure that that happened on our behalf. And we could all maybe spend a little time celebrating what will happen to benefit us that otherwise would not have. So maybe we can get a little data on that over time.
Absolutely. Of note also, the rec residence fees are now kept local. So the Forest Glen tract, where we have some rec residences, those fees are kept local on the forest now. And that, that is a change as well. So, yeah, no, I, I really appreciate that Supervisor Cox. We are excited about the transition of the lake. And we've got some more folks over getting their boat licenses and getting trained. And we're trying to see what we can do about upgrading the floating facilities on the lake. They're, they're, if we don't get them soon, there'll be an ARC site.
There's so much truth to that.
You, I hope you guys have a wonderful day.
Thank you very much, good to see you back.
All right, bye-bye.
Take a five-minute break.
Okay, we are back. And we will start with public comment. This time is for information from the public on matters not appearing on this agenda or within this consent calendar. All comments limited to three minutes and must pertain to matters within the jurisdiction of this board. And when addressing the board, please state your name for the record and address the board as a whole through the chair. No actual discussion will be conducted on matters not listed on the agenda. However, the chair may refer the subject matter to the appropriate department for follow-up or schedule the matter on a subsequent board agenda. Do we have any public comment in the room? On Zoom?
Ben?
Good morning, Board and Staff. Ben Kellogg, Weaverville. It's somewhat disappointing to hear that, for whatever reason, the county decided not to be involved in the 2023 process that was early, uh, presented regarding the broadband project. Barbara Hayes is correct, and I completely agree that Trinney County will not have anywhere near 100% fiber installation. And solutions like Starlink would be a better solution. Perhaps down the line, the federal government with Elon's help could create a program that gives Starlink at a very reduced price to rural residents like us. I'm happy to hear that BD includes Starlink as an option, as an eligible applicant. I hope they do apply as an applicant. With fixed wireless, you do need fiber as the backhaul. So perhaps using existing cell sites or other sites that have a fiber run to it would, uh, expand this initiative faster, working with local and state owners of those sites. In regards to Supervisor Lotwiler's comments about there's plenty of bandwidth for Trinney County in regards to Starlink, that's actually not really accurate. Trinney County is one of those areas that Starlink has identified recently as needing more bandwidth and they are rationing new accounts, mostly in rural counties like ours. This is also a great opportunity for jobs within the county. We would need installers at some point to roll this out to people who wanted broadband, whether it's Starlink, self-install packages, or fixed wireless. Either way, this is a huge endeavor and it'll take years, if not decades, to implement fully. And we'll take multiple providers to achieve and to give customers the most bang for their buck, so not to have one company get a monopoly. Having Trinney County moving farther into the 21st century is a far better outcome than having to deal with some traffic delays. People want this service, no doubt. It would be short sighted and unfortunate decision if we decided not to stand behind this initiative going forward. It's going to take all of us to push us over the goal line. My original comments were about volunteerism. So we all know that volunteerism is the backbone of Trinney County. And as we all grow older, uh, people are unfortunately aging out that do, uh, the most volunteering. Doesn't matter what, uh, or where you're doing the volunteerism, we need more of it. Perhaps the county could work with, uh, local stakeholders and set some type of volunteer fair up. So to get more people signed up and involved in volunteering, whether it's for fire or the GAC or whatever the volunteers.
Your time is up now.
Thank you.
Veronica?
Good morning, Supervisors. This is Veronica Kelly Albes with the Weaverville Douglas City Parks and Recreation District. I just wanted to take a moment and call out a department and staff members, um, with a big thank you and, um, just a rave for them. The Auditor's Office, Christine Gaffney and her staff, uh, Jahara and Buck, um, have been incredibly helpful to our small special district as well as others in, um, processing things, going through our audits, finding alternatives, because audits, uh, for small districts, uh, special districts has really gone through the roof. And when districts such as ours have such a small operating budget, um, you know, i- it becomes incredibly burdensome, as I'm sure you guys all know with what you all have to deal with, um, to, to get it accomplished. And she's always, um, trying to find ways to help us find more economical options, uh, through different auditors or helping us find auditors as some drop off. So I just wanted to give a big shout out to Christine and her staff at the Auditor's Office. They, um, they're incredible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Adrian?
Hey, thank you. Uh, good morning, Supervisors, Staff. Adrian Keyes, Hay Fork. Um, see, I'd like to request a, a future, uh, agenda item for a comprehensive report and update on the progress of the program that was began, I believe, last year, revolving around each district being able to identify a specific problem property and have it be put into receivership, cleaned up, and then resold. From what I've seen from the target property in the Hay Fork area, um, well, frankly, it's, it's gotten much worse. Um, the problem continues and is expanding and it is, it's significant detriment to our town. And there's really nothing that the, uh, citizens here can do, um, maybe without getting themselves in a lot of trouble at least. And, and I know that there was some money allocated, I believe, and there was a contract with a receivership company. And I just haven't heard anything further about it. And I would, I would really appreciate a, uh, comprehensive and thorough update, not just on the compound here in Hay Fork, but on all the, uh, projects in the other districts also. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more on Zoom?
No new raised hands.
Okay, we will move on to reports and announcements. Cao Tuthill.
Chair, do you want to see if there's any department head reports first?
Uh, any department head reports? Tim, excuse me.
Morning Chair, morning Board, Tim Saxon Sheriff. Little things to advise you of. Uh, recently, the Trinney County Search and Rescue, uh, hosted the annual Tactical Combat Casualty Care Training Course. Uh, this training is conducted by the California Army National Guard. Uh, it was held here in Weaverville. Attendees included our search and rescue team, uh, members of the Sheriff's Office. Fish and Wildlife attended, as well as the Shasta County Search and Rescue. And we had others, first responders from around the county that would, uh, took advantage of the training as well. And I want to shout out to Trinity High School for allowing us to use their gymnasium and the, um, Trinity County Sheriff's Auxiliary for their assistance, assistance in setting up and also helping with food preparation and serving lunch to the attendees. On March 24th, volunteer members of the Search and Rescue Team, as well as deputies, were called out in the middle of the night to rescue two persons who became stranded in the snow in the area of, uh, Grizzly Camp in northwest Trinity County. So they spent some time out there to rescue those folks. Uh, also advise you that on April 18th, uh, we have a deputy that will be graduating from the Correctional Core Academy in Shasta County. So that's great news to have another graduate. Uh, last week, I attended the District Five Town Hall Meeting, uh, with Supervisor Brownfield. Great turnout down there. Uh, they had some great questions and we had wonderful discussion on various topics uh, with regard to, uh, budget, uh, patrol, uh, the jail and public safety in general. So it was nice to get down there. And, uh, a few weeks ago, uh, we had our dispatch that received a call for assistance from stranded boaters who were fishing out on Trinity Lake in poor weather. Um, their engine had failed. Uh, there were no other boaters on the lake. So, uh, two deputies were called out to respond for the rescue. And, uh, being weather, or winter rather, uh, they had to respond to our storage barn and, uh, prepare one of the boats, because they'd been pulled off the lake for winter time. And they responded out there and, um, we got a nice little letter that was sent in. So I'd like to read part of that. Um, so just a short note to let you know about some good work by two Trinity deputies. Will Oliver and Josh Ford. Last Wednesday, my partner and I were fishing on the lake when his bass boat engine failed. Unfortunately for us, no other boats were on the lake. So after a few calls, we found the county would send a boat to assist us. An hour or so later, and in the middle of a rainstorm, the two deputies arrived and towed us to Trinity Marina. So far, I assumed that this was normal procedure. What I'm writing about is the goodwill the deputies portrayed. In spite of the bad weather and the hassle of preparing and launching the county boat, two helped us through a somewhat miserable situation with smiles and good humor. That went beyond normal, in my opinion. From experience, I know law enforcement can be frustrating. I also know respect and good service when I see it. And I know how important it is to have deputies who display those attributes. So I thought that was really nice that they sent that in. So, thank you very much. Anything you'd like to pass my way before I get out of your hair?
Thank you.
Can I just thank you for coming to District Five? That was a wonderful night. You spent a lot of time with us and traveled really far to do it. Um, we, we really respect law enforcement and we hope that, that people will tell you more often what a good job you do and, and how much we appreciate you. So we do, District Five, everybody does in every, every district here.
Thank you very much.
Know that. We're going to build on that.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Sheriff Saxon, it's always good to hear something positive like that. I know we hear a lot of negatives, but good things do happen.
Absolutely.
And that was, uh, happening on the lake the same way. And sometimes it doesn't go your way or theirs. So that was, uh, it could have been a life-saving effort they made. So thank you very much.
We've got a great team. We've got great personnel. They're always willing to jump up, uh, no matter the time of day or night and the conditions. And they answer the call and they go out there and they take care of business.
Thank them for us.
Thank you.
Cao Tuthill.
Thank you, Chair. Got a few items to kind of go along with the gratitude and thanks theme, uh, that we heard from the Auditor's Office and just from the Sheriff's Office. I got a, uh, online submittal, uh, for a thank you and a recognition. This is for the Planning Division under the Community Development Department. And this is specifically for Debbie, Angel and Bella. And some of the comments on the form, you know, the treatment you received, very good. Employees were helpful. Everything was explained to your satisfaction and the written comments were, I wanted to express my gratitude for the experience that I had down at Planning over a couple of occasions with Bella and Angel, as well as Debbie on a separate occasion. I had a couple of issues that needed to address and they were receptive and got back to me quickly with the answers I needed. Much appreciated. Uh, so just like to, you know, recognize them and also recognize the, the public who take the time to submit these. I've read a few more, uh, in previous forums. And just so the, the public is aware, when we get these in, uh, this new forum comes to me via electrons, via our website. Uh, there's still the, the printed version or the PDF version that people can submit. Uh, but when these come in, I get them, I read every one of them, uh, and then well, in coordination with the department head, you know, we will make sure that the individuals are appropriately thanked and recognized on a personal level when these come in. So they are very much appreciated. They go a long way for morale, uh, in the area. As oftentimes, we hear the negative things, uh, so it is nice to hear the, the positive aspects as well, as there are many of those that go on throughout the departments. Next topic is the Countywide First Responder Communication System. Uh, has been a topic discussed, uh, in a few various forums as of late. I just want to let the board know, uh, that I've reached out to the Public Safety Communications Group within the Cal OES structure. And we're in the process of setting up, uh, a demo of the California Radio Interoperable System. Uh, acronym is CHRIS, C-H-R-I-S. There is some information on the Cal OES website about the different phases and kind of where we're at in the, the implementation of that. But the timing may be right for Trinity as, um, we may have an opportunity to be involved with the actual implementation in our area and then the potential use of that system. There are some service agreements and fees, but based upon the current condition of our system, I think we need to start taking a little more strategic look and how we can enhance our overall system. And this is a step in the right direction, at least looking at one potential option. So based upon the demo we'll have shortly, uh, and if there's items that are required from the board, I will bring this item back and we'll have further discussions. But just know it is a topic that's high on the priority list. In an effort to explore other possible revenue sources, I had a conversation with the Yuba Water Agency who owns and operates the six facilities, uh, associated with the Yuba River. They were established about the same time as the Trinity River Division under the Central Valley Project in the, in the mid 1950s. Uh, they were given local control and ownership and the Yuba County Board of Supervisors actually comprises five of the seven uh, bodies or the, the positions under the Yuba Water Agency. But, you know, they're different. They're private. We hear the federal government maintains control and ownership of the Central Valley Project and the, you know, which the Trinity River Division is part of that. So I did learn some good information, uh, based upon the, the, the conversation and the, and the meeting. But I don't think there's any real opportunities to adjust our structure to mirror their structure uh, or to, you know, to do much of a change there. Uh, although I do have a good point of contact there now. And, uh, I can bounce some questions and ideas off of, off of that organization. I was referred to them via some RCRC contacts, um, just to see if there's any similarities. But unfortunately, I don't think there are enough to, to make any progress. just to see if there's any similarities, but unfortunately, I don't think there are enough to, to make any progress there. But there are some other options that are being looked at based upon that conversation. And those we'll talk about at a later date. On the consent calendar today, you will see a, a nurse contract is on there to support our detention facility. The item is, is routine as it, it is a standard contract. So it is on the consent calendar, but I just wanted to highlight it because this is a significant event, a significant addition to the service and capability that's going to be provided on behalf of our county in the detention field, detention facility. I just wanted to thank the entire HHS A team, uh, the contract medical providers, who are in fact providing the service that we have been asking for, and then the sheriff's office. And so we've all been working this effort. And again, it, it is a routine contract, but it is a significant capability and an adjustment that we are bringing for our local detention facility. And for that, I'm very grateful for the entire team's effort. On this secure rural school funding topic, just as a, as a status update, the, the bill, if you will, is currently at the committee level in Congress. So it is slowly making some progress and at least it is still being looked at. I have received some feedback that the Board of Supervisors letters and engagement has been very, very helpful. Supervisor Carpenter Harris, you know, personally helped deliver letters when she was back at NACO. And the whole NACO team is very engaged with this topic and the message is very consistent and strong. And for that, I thank everyone who is involved. However, as each day goes by, you know, our ability to actually utilize these funds and receive these funds this fiscal year fades. So I am less optimistic each day. This means our road department will not receive the 1.5 million dollars for maintenance efforts. So if we don't get these SRS funds, some of the planned maintenance activities will not happen this late spring, summer, and fall. I understand this is not good news as we have many roads throughout the entire county in desperate need of road maintenance and repair. So when people get frustrated about this, I ask them to convey these frustrations, you know, to our federally elected officials and encourage the support for SRS in a positive manner. I hope I'm wrong. I really do hope I'm wrong and I hope this funding comes. There is still a route to passage and for us to see some of this funding. And as we continue the strong partnership with our schools, we will continue to be a strong advocate for SRS and support this effort in any way we can. So just keep encouraging, but know our time is of the essence and as every day goes by, our likelihood of actually using this funding is less and less. So the help has been appreciated so far and please continue to support where we can. And that's all I got right now.
Thank you, C O Tuttill.
When you say our ability to use the funds, is there a time limit on them being used before the end of the fiscal year?
We have to receive them before the end of the fiscal year.
Okay. So if we get them, we can use them whenever, but we just have to get them before the end of the fiscal year.
Right.
Thank you.
Right.
Significant planning and contracting that has to be done on the front side of those projects being implemented.
We got to get the funds this fiscal year is our, is one of our biggest challenges and the timing. There has been one other time in about the last 20 years in, in 2017 that we didn't get the funds. So it, it has happened before. This would not be a, you know, a first time deal. But it, it will have an impact on us and our days are getting limited.
Thanks for the update.
Chairman Gogan, when, when will we, is there a time when we, when we really know when that's not that, that it passes that we will know we're not going to get it or we are going to get it?
Not specifically. It just depends upon the big congressional actions. I mean, I, I know just based upon conversations literally this morning that it is actively being worked. And, you know, like I said, there is a route to success. But we just need to keep pushing at every opportunity we can.
C O Tuttill, you mentioned 2017 and it's not getting awarded any money that, that year. That would have been the first year or so of that administration. And we are in the first year of.
This is a congressional issue though.
What's that?
This is a, this is a congressional issue. It's, it's in the House and the Senate. It's not a presidential action. So it's, it's up to Congress and, and who has the.
Yeah. If you recall, I mean, not to dive in a rabbit hole, but if you recall, you know, I mean, this, this was almost passed during the last Congress and it, they couldn't get it across the finish line. So, you know, we'll, we'll see what this Congress does and hopefully there can be enough voices and we can be enough of a squeaky wheel, you know, to, to get the, the funding across, you know, we're one of like, you know, 700 recipients of this. So it's not just us. I mean, there's a lot of jurisdictions that rely upon this, this money. So hopefully in the big scheme of things, the, the powers to be that run these committees and that run the congressional side of things will administratively find a path to, to get this through in the right time.
Let's keep our fingers crossed. We all need it. We will go to reports from members of the Board of Supervisors. I will start and I think the day after our last board meeting, we have a TMC meeting, which are generally two-day in-person meetings. Somewhere without, within the North State. Now because of the federal cutbacks, they are virtual and they are one day only. So we kind of went through a few things fairly quickly there and just a brief update on some of the things that we touched on. We did come up with a flow schedule for this year. I think it's a very reasonable flow schedule. Due to the amount of water that we have in the lake, I think the lake will probably ends up about 90 odd percent full for the summer, which is a long-awaited good thing for the lake and the people who recreate there. Uh, we also talked a little bit about the timing of the flow schedules and it's, it's kind of a a good thing for me to, to get outside of help on this generally. It's just me thinking about it and giving my answer, but they wanted to bump the flows from 700 to 1,000 during the Fourth of July weekend. And myself being a fishing guide, I thought that's a good thing, you know, that always helps fishing. I asked Trent to weigh in and with the multiple hats he wears, he thought that safety of the public was more important than, than fishing. And so we decided to move the, we put forward to move the bumping of the flow from 700 to 1,000 from July 4th to July 7th. Out of concern for the many tourists and people that'll be using the river on the Fourth of July weekend, which I think was a very good move. We are solidly in a wet year. I don't think we'll, we'll get into a extremely wet year or a normal year this year. So flows should be good. Um, I had a town hall meeting last Wednesday, had 30, 40 people attend there. It was well-attended. They, they are open-ended. It's a great, for me, it's, it's a lot of fun. I think that people enjoy it also. So we'll continue doing that. Hay Fork does have their fundraiser coming up on the 5th for the scholarships. It'll be at 5 o'clock at dining hall in Hay Fork. That is all I have. Supervisor Lou Wyler, if you're ready.
So as Tara mentioned, when Supervisor Cox pulled together a great agenda for Heidi McHugh, Representative Assembly Member Rogers, it included things like the Trinity River Lumber Mill Tour, which I had never been to. So I was able to join for that, which was great. And just wanted to comment, it was impressive to me that this is, this is a facility that is state-of-the-art. You know, this is not just an old mill that was hanging on. There, there is a lot of new investment in state-of-the-art equipment that is helping us make the most of the timber that we have pouring through that facility. And it's a major employer for us. They did note that housing and access to local timber were some of their top challenges. And we, you know, always hear about housing. I think it's truly at the core of our number one issue to solve to move Trinity County forward. And then it was great to hear Tara talk about some of the work that's being done to, to increase the amount of local timber coming in, but they are basically having to go far away to bring lumber in to do their work here. So the more that we can get to that place where we can actually keep our forests healthy and use the lumber right here in our own mill is critical. And I think the other point that was made in this conversation is that the only way that this whole system works of foresting here and harvesting timber is to have a mill here. So the ongoing investment in that mill to keep it alive and active and productive is just hugely important for our county. SGED, which is the Economic Development Group for our region, strategic planning is still going ahead. I led the first ad hoc committee meeting to move that planning forward. And another meeting's taking place here in the next week or two. And it's promising. We're actually making a little more momentum with a focused ad hoc committee and, and more time than we were having on the overall board. The Tourism Development Advisory Board that was formed by this organization held their second meeting. Uh, in that, some of the decisions that were starting to be made were one, just the name of what would the organization be? And it would be the Trinity County Tourism Development. It could have been tourism marketing. It could have been tourism improvement. It could have been lots of different things, but the group decided on tourism development, thinking that was a more broad scope of what could be covered. Uh, there will be a new nonprofit formed during this process, uh, rather than trying to rely on an existing nonprofit because the group didn't feel like there was any one existing nonprofit that would be appropriate to work through. That new nonprofit then, of course, would have board members and criteria for the, the people being on that board. From a geographic standpoint, the, there was discussion about this could have been limited in any way you can think of and geographically within Trinity County, but the, the proposal is to move forward at a county-wide approach. So rather than try to carve out some parts, just go county-wide. It is possible that that opinion could change later on if you start to see that there isn't support from some parts of the county and you don't want to lose the whole thing because some parts of the county won't support it. You can just carve out those parts. But you have to do it in the process so that you still come out successful. And then the next part after you have geography is the scope and focus. And so that could have been as broad as all kinds of businesses or just hotels or whichever. And for a couple of different reasons, the decision was to focus on lodging businesses only. So not just hotels, but hotels and short-term rentals and things like that, but not go to restaurants and others. Uh, part of that is because the board, this board's approval of $30,000 of funding won't cover going beyond that. Uh, it would have taken four more months and it would have probably cost, you know, 20,000 more dollars. And so we said, well, let's use what we have. And the other is that it is the Civitas people said a huge portion of the people that start out, start off with the lodging. And you can build from there if you want, but that was a lot of discussion and ultimately a decision, let's stay focused on the lodging only. So a request has already come into staff basically asking for help in identifying through the TOT process, everything else. Well, who are those providers? Because again, what will happen is a petition has to take place and 50% or more of the weighted average of those votes have to be in supportive petition. And a weighted average means if the five of us up here each had businesses in lodging, but mine was 10% and Supervisor Gogan's was 50%, well, his one vote then becomes 50%, yes. And whereas we're not just equal votes. It's on, based on revenues, TOT and so forth. So we'll, we'll be getting that. Uh, the other decision that was being put forward was you have to decide, well, what amount of assessment? For instance, right now we have the 5% TOT. And so what are you trying to add on to that with an assessment for this development in a district? And the decision was to move forward with a 3% assessment. So if you think that on average, if we get five, if 5% generates around $300,000 a year, adding 3% maybe it will give us another 200,000 or so that could go on to that. So you know, it's a decent number. And I think it was a cautious approach to say, if you go too high, then you're going to turn people off. They're not going to want to do it. You go too low, why did you bother? Sweet spot was determined to be 3%. The board, Advisory Board also voted to amend the bylaws because bylaws, as we approved them, did not enable them to create an ad hoc committee, which meant everything had to be done only in those 72-hour notice meetings and everything else. And so the bylaws change was made. It allowed for ad hoc. And basically then several members can meet between our every other week meetings to work through some of the details. And an example is this week, yesterday, a meeting took place and the focus was going to be on now we have to decide what kinds of services will be potentially provided by this in a development district. Because you can only do work that is within that. And, and yet you don't want it to be a laundry list because some people might look at that and say, well, I don't want you taking my money that I collect for the assessment and working on that. So you have to choose the list that you think is going to be successfully supported, that will be meaningful and impactful for Trinity County. And so that is the work that that ad hoc committee is doing, that they will bring back to this next Advisory Board meeting. And again, this is the cycle that we're working through. But very soon, what we need to be doing is taking some of these decisions out to the key decision makers, the people that will be signing those petitions with one vote or 50 votes, you know, in my example, so that we can start to see if we're going to have success this time around.
What's the date for the next meeting? Sorry.
Uh, next meeting would be the 7th, I think. Let me look. Yeah. Monday, there are every other Monday, pretty much so, Monday, 7th at 3:30 here in this room.
And where do those agendas get posted?
The agendas are posted on a webpage that was established specifically for the Tourism Development Advisory Board, as well as I think Leah helps us by putting them up here in the normal places that we publicize those. Um, and Civitas is preparing those agendas with Ryan from up north and I are the people that are chair and vice chair. So we look at them to make sure they're okay, but then Leah posts them on the website and posts them. But otherwise Civitas project manager is the one who's taking us through the process. So she's the one developing the agenda. Uh, and the last thing I had was something I've mentioned before in some of these meetings, but low-impact camping. Organizations like Hip Camp that are similar, for instance, to a VRBO or, you know, Airbnb that might help you find a room or a apartment or a house to rent. These people find you camping sites to rent. And I just wanted to make sure that as we go through our general plan work, that if that is the right time and place to address that, that it's being addressed and not lost in the shuffle. So I just shared information that I'd gathered from being on a, I think it was a CSAC meeting a while back. And so that they have that current information and it'll hopefully be something that comes before us. That's my update.
Yes, that Hip Camp is kind of a good opportunity for for some of our folks who own larger parcels.
How do you go right in?
I also attended along with Liam, the TMC Zoom meeting, listening in there on the different strategies for our flows and so forth. I'll just say this, I did say it on the, on the call as well. I always get a bit nervous when we increase flows in the summer. Last year we had a drowning and it was right on the front side of the increased flows. And so it just seemed from the community's perspective, a very cruel action to increase flows when a family was looking for their lost loved one. And those are just some of the realities of, of, you know, the decisions that, that we make. Perspective, I think, is really important. The cho, the choice to push the flows up a week kept the folks up here on this end of the river happy. And then the next weekend is the big event in Willow Creek where we invite everyone to the world there and they will be having those increased flows. So there's always something. So there's always something, I know, but it's just the reminder that humanity is in this process as well alongside of the decisions that are made is something I always try to keep my ear to. I do want to speak back to the efforts around secure rural schools. I just would like to encourage our community members. Was a letter provided, a template? Rick, or I'm sorry Supervisor Litwiler. I felt like, did we, do we have a standard letter that people could download to send? That kind of represents what Trinity County is asking for or hoping for, that folks could send if they chose to?
We gave the letters that we submitted as examples.
Okay, so they can craft, they can kind of cherry pick out of that. Okay, I just want to encourage people to, to just, you know, with a lot of decorum, reach out to our Congress and Senate folks that represent our region. And then don't be afraid, if you have family members that live in other rural communities and other states, their Congress folks are going to also be voting on this. So it doesn't just have to be hundreds of letters to our person. It can reach out to surrounding counties within the state that maybe are in other districts. Active citizenship is something that we all need to be engaged in and getting this work out. And I do communicate a bit with Lamoffa's office periodically to see how things are going. And same report is what you mentioned, CA Tuttle Hill, that there is a smidge of movement, but we still need to continue to reach out and talk about how important this is to us. I attended the collaborative meeting and that was just, I have like three pages of notes, man. It was very informative and I will be sharing my notes with Supervisor Cox as we both are representatives on the collaborative. And so I'll make sure that I get those to you so that you know what's going on there. But one of the things, I guess, the standouts to me from that meeting, as we heard from the Forest Service today, I am very, very happy and grateful for all of the effort and work it's taken to really start to get some activity in our forest and timberlands, in the arenas of fuels reduction, you know, holistic timber harvest. We spoke about the mill today, a couple of people spoke about that. This is really a good time for us to take advantage of the great people that we have working in our federal agencies in our area right now. I'm very pleased with the responses and the activities that are coming down the loop. And I also was very happy to hear that most of the funding had been, that had been put on pause for, you know, some of the summertime work or temporary work. Has, everyone looks like they are going to be up and running in full speed ahead. And even a lot of the larger grants that I know were concerns with the Trinity County Resource Conservation District. It was reported out that they had heard that, that for the most part, those were going to be released and those projects would go forward. So the pause has been hit again and play is now in action. So that is really good. I know a lot of people depend on these big grant projects to, for their jobs and their livelihood. So that was, that was good to hear. I also attended the Cal OES report out for the week. Like one of the large, it was predominantly talking about the recovery of the Los Angeles region. But a couple of things that they did cover in regards to homeowners insurance, just for shock factor. Our insurance has increased by 66% since 2017 and now is roughly, if you have an impound account on your mortgage, your insurance is roughly 23% of your mortgage payment. This increase is having a very, very negative impact on people's ability to afford homes and locking a lot of folks out of their ability to finish escrow. A lot of times they get into it, their loan is approved, and then they have to add those insurance costs and it kicks them above what they are capable of affording. And folks are falling out of escrow. We know that housing is an enormous issue all over the country. And it sounds like internationally when you listen to news from other regions. We really need to just start looking for those solutions. And maybe they can be built with some of the timber out of our forest. Maybe some of the timber that's going to come out of our mill will be able to help the supply chain. But I don't see a lot of hope in the insurance climate right now, but we'll see what happens. I know that increase in costs and increase in demands, increase rates. And it's brutal out there right now. So it's not just us though, we're on the trail with a lot of other people. But just keeping our eyes on that, I think is important. And then I also want to just give a little bit of a shout out to the Shasta Cascade SVDC of California. I had the opportunity, they've presented to our board and then I've seen them at other varying events. And I reached out to them to help me on a project that I'm working on. And I have to say, it was an amazing experience and it was just lickety-split, one thing, next thing, next thing. And they provided me with a lot of good, solid information. So anyone who's looking to create a business, I would highly recommend giving them a call. The services are free and they were very, very helpful for me. Thank you.
Supervisor Cox.
See, start with the collaborative meeting and I did need to miss that for family reason. And so not only will I catch up with Supervisor Carpenter Harris, but I have a meeting set for tomorrow with their leadership as well. So I make sure I'm all the way up to speed. So thank you for that. The Fire Safe Council, a letter will be going out from them soon to our federal leadership expressing the need to not stifle, but continue the momentum that has been established with highly effective use of allotted funding in partnership between our Forest Service and our local partners. And they've worked hard on that to keep it streamlined and to a nice direct point. And so letting the board know you'll be copied in on that, it should be out shortly. I did have out of county travel. I was in Sacramento last week for the RCRC board meeting. A substantial number of Assembly and Senate bills are under consideration. And I do appreciate their careful tracking of all of that on our behalf. Any of those that we wish to have support or opposition letters as appropriate provided to us for our ease in providing our support collectively are provided, you see three on those on our consent calendar today. And I'll be bringing more forward to you for your consideration in the coming weeks. First five, a strategic planning survey was provided countywide. 53 responses were received and there is a subcommittee reviewing the needs and desires expressed by parents and caregivers in our county as to what they see as their predominant needs and desires to be provided for children age zero to five. So that subcommittee will be reviewing those and then bringing forward suggestions for incorporation into the strategic plan going forward. Trinity First Five opened a request for applications on March 19th, due May 12th, based on potential availability of fund via the Small County Population Funding Augmentation. That's a mouthful, through First Five California. So First Five Trinity is seeking to support programs that improve the health development and well-being of our zero to five population and their families in this way. Following up with a bit more on Heidi McHugh's visit to our county and the two days that she spent. I really appreciated all of the entities adjusting their schedules, incorporating her into various field trips. I do feel that she left probably exhausted, but she took home with her what I really appreciated as a really good, high-level overview in a very interconnected way. The various issues and opportunities of our county and really was exposed to the partnerships and the collaborative ways by which we seek to work together and also the needs that we would ask her to take back to her boss, our assembly member. And I did think that her appearance at our Fire Safe Council as an outflow of that just this last week was proof of a really good interaction between us. And enjoyed getting to know her and appreciate the relationship that we will have going forward. That is the end of my report.
Supervisor Brownfield.
Thank you Chairman Gogan. So I had a few things that have been done. So roads is on my agenda. That is the one thing for the next four years that I'll be working really hard to help fix and repair. And so we have the Department of Transportation coming up on the 8th for a road tour of our district. And I'm really appreciative of Trent and Panos for agreeing to do that. And maybe we can discuss and talk about maybe some options, knowing that we've got funding problems coming up. So that'll be a really good discussion on how we address the roads. Because before we do anything in growth, our roads have to be brought under control. So thank you everybody for helping me with that. Our town halls, I had two town halls, one on Wednesday, one on Thursday, night at 5 o'clock. They are wonderful. We've had a wonderful showing at them. 20 to 25 people attend and there's conversations back and forth about how to solve the problems that we have. We had Sheriff Saxton up this time. We'll try to bring up more people from the departments to get to know everybody and see how we can better serve our people up there. So I really thank everybody for coming up. I know it's a far distance to travel to do that, but it really helps to get our people to have a voice and to talk about things. So Post Mountain PUD is having their meeting on the 11th of April. And I will be attending that. And I think that Liam will also be at that meeting. And the president of the Monk Community will be there too now. So we'll have a good conversation about what they, you know, how things are progressing with the PUD. So that's really good. I'm happy about that. Patsy Lewis has been kind enough, is a constituent of ours up in Southern Trinity. She will be collecting data for Trinity Journal, just events that are going on and things that are happening up there because Timber was nice enough to say that she'd like to have some input from Southern Trinity in the paper. So I'm excited about that. So we'll start having some things put in the Trinity Journal for us up there. And that's it, no out of town travel. Thank you very much.
And your thoughts on ad hoc? Theo Tuttle.
Thank you Chair. So the homeless encampment ad hoc, so we have not met as an ad hoc since our last board meeting. However, work continues by the Cal Fire crews on vegetation management. And then there is another camp walk that is being scheduled currently. Additionally, the ad hoc members have reviewed the draft ordinance language updates and we will be discussing those, discussing that input. And then we plan to finalize any of those ordinance aspects that we want to bring forward to the board at the next ad hoc meeting, which is scheduled for the 10th of April at 2:00 PM. That's all I've got.
Thank you Theo Tuttle. We will move into the consent calendar. These items include routine and non-controversial matters and will be acted upon by the board by one rule call motion. If a member of the public has any questions or comments on an item on the consent calendar, they may provide them now. A member of the board or staff may request an item be pulled and considered separately. Do we have any public comment in the room? On Zoom?
No raised hands.
Any members of board would like to pull an item? We have no pulled items today. Shall we make a motion?
I would, I was going to move to approve the consent calendar as it is. I'll second that.
Go ahead.
Supervisor Brownfield?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Litwiler?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye. We will now go into county matters. These items include non-routine or controversial matters and are listed alphabetically by department. A member of the board, staff or public may request that an item be heard out of order. E1, board supervisors discuss and/or take action to appoint Supervisor Carpenter Harris, selection for planning commissioner District Four to serve term concurrent with District Four supervisor. Do we have?
Can we do a public comment first?
I would recommend you just introduce it real quickly, state who it is and then do a public comment and then.
Thank you. I had, Don Ellis had contacted me to let me know that he was no longer available to serve as a planning commissioner for my district. He submitted his list of reasonings. He's a very busy man and as things are right now, his time just, he didn't, he just simply did not have enough time to continue in that active service for the district. When that piece of information was put out and the request for interest letters came, I had received two letters of interest and two other phone calls after explaining, you know, the time it takes and the commitment that is required for that. The folks that I spoke to with, on the phone calls, decided to not submit a formal letter of interest. And then I did receive two letters of interest. And one of the gentlemen who had submitted a letter of interest later determined that he would potentially have too many recusals to be able to serve in full capacity. And I received a letter from Mr. McIntosh with whom I had discussions with at length. And I feel very comfortable reinstating him as he served prior to my, prior to my supervisory position on the board. So I have accepted his letter of request. I have spoken with him at length and I am comfortable submitting him to serve as a planning commissioner for District Four. And I would like to bring that forward to the board.
Do we have any public comment?
Veronica?
Good morning Veronica Kelly Albies, Douglas City. I have watched Duncan on, when he was previously on the commission. He is a thoughtful planner. He understands the district. You know, I found him to be fair as he looked at the whole of the county, not just the District Four. And, you know, he does his research. He, I think he'll bring back some strong professionalism and commissioner vibe to the commission. So I think it's nice to see him back.
Thank you. Any other on Zoom?
No new raised hands.
I would move approval of Duncan McIntosh for the District Four.
I will second, I'm sorry, I will second.
Thank you.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Litwiler?
Aye.
Supervisor Brownfield?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Great to have him back.
Great to have him back.
Yeah, I think he'll do good. All right. E two. Community development cannabis. Introduce and waive the reading of an ordinance amending Trinity County Code Section seventeen dot four three pertaining to commercial cannabis cultivation regulations and section seventeen point three two pertaining to use permits. Drew, how are you today?
I am doing well. Good day. Board. Drew Plubani, Cannabis Division Director. So I'll just give a little bit of background. As I'm sure you're all somewhat aware, you know, the original commercial cannabis cultivation process, which we refer to as CCVs, you know, started many years ago. In more recent times, in here, let me pull up my notes. Basically, in in twenty twenty-three, the board adopted the streamlining ordinance, which then allowed for the existing backlog of CCVs to be processed during that twenty twenty-three period in time where, you know, following program shutdown, we were attempting to resolve that backlog and move it forward. In almost a year ago, April sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, the board adopted ordinance three one five eight five six, which codified Trinity County Code Section seventeen point four three point zero five one. And that established the administrative buffer reduction process. In February, we took an appeal of the director's decision to deny an administrative buffer reduction director's use permit to the planning commission. The staff recommendation was that the planning commission uphold the director's decision to deny, given the way that code is constructed, which, you know, essentially is laid out in subsection five, which clarifies the consent opposition letter process, which was born out of the original C C V streamlining resolution. And so when we took that item to the planning commission, one of the things that came to light is that essentially given the way that this code section is constructed, it didn't really give the ability to the planning commission to weigh in on the facts and make a objective determination on that item. So the direction that we received as staff was to update this code section rather than a receiving a qualified opposition letter, meaning that the director would automatically deny the administrative buffer reduction, which then would trigger the ability for someone affected by that to appeal that director's decision to the planning commission. What seemed more sensible was that, and and this was kind of the request from the planning commission was that we update this subsection to simply say that if a qualified opposition was received, that it would be scheduled for a hearing by the planning commission. So that is what we've done. The other minor change that we made was that originally, when we brought seventeen four three oh five one, this A B R concept to the planning commission, the some of the comments from the planning commission, which were then incorporated into the ordinance and ultimately adopted by the board, were to use the term community development director as the approver of this administrative buffer reduction. So that's one of the other changes you will see where we feel that it's more appropriate to actually refer to the individual who is approving a director's use permit, the planning director, as opposed to the community development director. So those are the two major changes that you'll see reflected in the resolution that was recommended to you all for these changes by the planning commission and in this first draft of the ordinance before y'all today.
Thank you Drew. Any questions from the board? Any questions in the room? Or any public comment? In the room, how about public comment on Zoom?
Veronica?
Good afternoon again, or morning Veronica Kelly Albies Douglas City. I had the opportunity to review this meeting and I I think I commend Director Plubani for bringing it forward and the planning commission. It it didn't seem right and something that I know that I've, you know, stood up for for all these years as people be having the ability to be heard. And the cultivator who had been there for such a long time had, you know, and then a new neighbor moves in. And to note, Commissioner Fall mentioned that when we put this all together, that was brought up, said, hey, guys, remember, this could happen. So I appreciate the opportunity for this kind of situation to come forward to have both sides be heard. What I would like to recommend, or or at least have everybody consider is, you know, when something like that happens as we move it from these variances over to the the buffer zones, is seriously consider that next level of mitigation measures that are turned in and that all of these cultivators have in the the plant in the cannabis division when they start their project. Because it it seems to have the the desire for someone to put in a an appeal or a hey, let's talk about this because I have some problems kind of says there's an issue here. And we often hear on any of these that, yes, there is a next level of mitigation measures for sound or for odor in the plan, but we don't have, they don't have to do that yet. Maybe that's something to consider to help alleviate some of the tension with some of these things that come before the planning commission and even yourselves. And I I have to admit, I don't know who the planning director is. I thought that we didn't have one of, and maybe that's changed. But, you know, those those are my comments on it. That is a great opportunity for both sides to be able to come forward, have their voices heard, and come to an equitable as best it can be and fair decision. Because they use the phrase senior parcel owner in the planning commission meeting. And you know, we've heard that before and it's been scoffed at. It just depends. I think, you know, it becomes whichever side of the fence you're falling on. I think they they all need a voice. If a if a business has been there that long, they need a a voice. And so I appreciate this this change, but I would like to really strongly recommend everybody look at how then to to level that up to make it equitable and fair for the neighbor as well. Residents as well. We just commercial, residential, things to think about. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other?
Adrian?
And thank you again. Everybody, Adrian Keys from Hayfork. I just want to speak in favor of this. This is definitely how all other use permit types are 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 addressed or approached. I think it's only fair to the existing business that they be allowed a chance to to contest the appeal. And I hope to see this passed as written today. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other?
Ben?
Good morning, Ben Kellogg Weareville. I do commend everyone for getting this fixed so fast. Wasn't expecting it to be fixed so fast or at all, to be honest. However, I do hope that going forward, there will be a mechanism quickly for the appealer to come back and have this overturned. Because it is a travesty in the name of economic development. You would not see this happen in any other circumstance. No one would buy a property in downtown Weareville next to the brewery or next to the Chinese restaurant and say, I'm complaining about the smell. I'm vegan or vegetarian. I'm going to go to the planning commission and I'm going to have them shut down. Or I live in one of the houses next to a hotel. I'm complaining about the noise. I want this shut down. That would never happen. It would only happen with cannabis. So let's get the stigma off of cannabis. Let's move forward in the spirit of economic development and getting money back in the county coffers. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other on Zoom?
No new raised hands.
We will bring it back to the board. The board have any questions? Nobody. Let's make a motion. Someone likes to make a motion to pass E two?
I would like to make a motion to pass to approve E two and pass is presented.
I will second.
So with that, I do have some some points of discussion. When when we were first having the conversation about basically, it's just a language change to talk about this in terms of a buffer reduction rather than variance because we were using an inappropriate meaning of that that term in the in the planning world. But during those conversations, we talked about three kind of situations that could arise, one of them being and and this was in the back to the context that you provided for us in the the spirit to expedite all of these licenses that needed to to get up and moving forward. One of them could be that the same property owner owned an adjacent, a parcel adjacent to itself. And so kind of silly to spend our time talking about whether we should or should not provide the variance requested. The other one would be, or the second one, two different property owners, but both of them being cultivators existed on adjacent parcels. And again, probably not any kind of a contentious situation. So move that forward. But the third one would be where a a non cultivator was next door adjacent parcel to the cultivator. And so that's a situation that we find ourselves discussing right now. And even in that context, I just would like us to consider that there can be two means by which, you know, this comes to our attention based on who's there first. And and because the cultivator in this recent, you know, situation was there first and the new property owner comes and purchases, it again seems like not really a conversation to be had. If you've done your due diligence, you know who you're moving in next to. Not that we shouldn't have continued conversations about our mitigation layers and timing of implementation, but that's not really what's before us today. But the the consideration that I would like us to talk about briefly is what if that's flipped? And we have the non cultivator owning the property, the would be cultivator coming to purchase the adjacent property. And that's the situation where I do think it's appropriate to consider that if that letter of opposition then comes in, that the the flip side is as viable as the one we're considering now. And so if we might want to look at language that would make this adjustment specific to existing cultivation and not new cultivation.
So one of the things, you know, from the sort of historical context that I didn't mention, initially, when we brought these proposed, this, you know, this proposed code section to the planning commission, they made those suggested language changes related to community development director. When we brought it to the board, one of the suggestions from Supervisor Frazier was to add an existing section, which is seventeen four three oh five one A three. And I can read it if that's helpful, but it it does address some of what you're talking about. Supervisor Cox, but I didn't, you know, take you guys through that. So if that's helpful, I'm happy to read that code section as it relates to some of what you're contemplating.
Yeah, I want to see it. Just give me a second to pull it up. It's not in the backup, right?
It should be included in the backup as the ordinance three one five eight five six should be included.
And Drew, while she's looking for that to make sure she can see it as you go through, can you talk me through your understanding of the example that she provided?
So, yes. She sort of, from my perspective, offered two examples. One was specifically, you know, surrounding this recent appeal that we had. And the other was, you know, a scenario by which there was a new cultivation application whose configuration was being proposed to encroach upon the required three hundred and fifty foot setback between mature canopy and an adjacent legal structure. So in section A three, and I'll just go ahead and read it because I think it answers your question.
Okay.
The buffer reduction must be for a legacy site. Legacy means sites developed for cannabis cultivation before the adoption of this ordinance. This definition includes sites which are licensed and unlicensed at the time of the adoption of this ordinance. Sites that have an approved appendix C. I don't know if I need to read the the whole thing, but basically that that does cover in some ways that scenario. So in terms of the way that we as staff have interpreted this code and the related associated administrative processes, we are doing a desktop review for any new application specific to, you know, how this A B R code section correlates to the review. So if we have an application for a new C C L whose site is configured to encroach upon the required three hundred and fifty foot setback, they have to meet this definition of legacy. So sites that sites developed for cannabis cultivation before the adoption of this ordinance. So the way that we are best able to do that currently is to look at historical aerial imagery. So if to Supervisor Cox's sort of question, if we were to receive a new application for a cultivation license, who is proposing to have mature canopy less than three fifty from an adjacent legal residential structure, then we're looking at aerial imagery. If we don't see any historical cultivation on that site, then per the way this ordinance is constructed, that A B R application is denied.
Okay.
Okay, it does answer my question.
Yeah. Yeah, I think the it raises another one for me, though. And that is we've now had a permit licensing program for how many years?
Seven, going on eight, I guess.
Right. I I knew it somewhere in there. So if I understood that correctly, it says if in the if you were illegally cultivating during this last seven years, then you can apply and you get to work under these rules. I I'm trying to figure out, why are we still giving the benefit of the doubt to people that have had seven years to get in the program? That that's, I I didn't realize that connection. I remember going through all these wordings when we did things before, but this and and I understand the original intention was, hey, it might not be in the best place, but it was there. And so let's give some, but now we're saying, well, it shouldn't have been there for the last seven years. Because if it was, it was already in the program and therefore it falls under a different scenario. If it wasn't in the program, it shouldn't have been there. So why are we still giving it some leg up, if you will?
That specific addition to what staff proposed came from Supervisor Frazier. So I can't fully answer your question as to, you know, his thinking. I understand what you're what you're pointing at. And if you would like to consider some, you know, alternative changes to this code section beyond what was proposed, of course, that is your pleasure.
Okay. And I guess for county council, just a question, if we were to make an adjustment here at this point, that included something like that that basically a small change that basically said it was legacy. You wouldn't even, you wouldn't even, yeah, legal legacy. I don't know. You just take out legacy. Because you're really only saying, if you've been in the program then, not you've had seven years, but we're still going to give you a chance. If if we make that change, can we still move today? Or is that too big of a change?
That is not too big of a change. That's just a
That is not too big of a change. That's just a clarification on definition. Allows you to move forward on that today.
Okay.
Do you remember Supervisor Frazier's intent on that?
Well, I mean, I, I think, you know, certainly obviously I can't speak to his intent. But from my perspective, one of the situations that we, I think, were trying to address with the addition of this legacy concept was that we have projects that have been working towards licensure since the program shutdown and even before then. So I think part of that was, was an attempt to acknowledge that we have sites that have been in process working towards licensure for a variety of years, some of which were historically licensed, some of which were historically illegal and others which may have been historically Prop 215 cultivation sites, so not inherently illegal cultivation. That, you know, was predating, you know, the passage of Prop 64.
But to Supervisor Lutweller's point, if you have a site that has been in process working toward legal licensure, you shouldn't be able to see that with aerial imagery.
Agreed. And so the process that staff established to ultimately try to create an administrative process that conforms to, you know, this code section, that's what we've done. That is the best tool for us to evaluate whether there was legacy or not. I don't disagree with yours.
Sure. And then you're covered in that by the fact that you've got this opposition letter opportunity. And if someone submits that, then you can know, you know, what the facts are surrounding that particular property.
Right. So if we aren't able to see any historical cultivation activity, you know, based on aerial imagery, then they just can't even apply for the ABR. I mean, they can apply for it, but ultimately it wouldn't be granted because they don't meet the, you know, the following criteria as laid out in this code section.
Well, assuming that we even want to consider a, a further change, we could approve this as is today and bring it back a further change later. Or we could try to take a few minutes and come up with language. I feel like some language change should be made, but I, I don't know how quickly we can come up with something right here. That, you know, everybody will feel like they've had a chance to vet appropriately.
So my suggestion would be to vote on what we have today and bring back what we've brought up and we can talk through that a little further.
So if you do make the change after today, you will still have to have, come back again?
Right.
Okay. So, so the only thing if you do it today, because it's been noticed, we can make the change here. But if you make it on the second time, then we're, if you bring it back another time, it's got to start all over again.
I, I think it's more productive if we can make the changes that are within the permissible ability for us to go ahead and move forward. It's worth a few minutes of our time to just take care of that.
I, I agree with that.
Can I pose a procedural question to Margaret? So if we make changes other than what is being presented, does it come back to the board as a first reading? Or can we make these changes and just proceed to a second reading?
So if you make the changes today, because it's been properly noticed and this is a clerical change that doesn't impact the land use related item to it. You can make the change today and the next one will be the second reading. If you bring it back with a change at the second reading, you'll have to do the first reading again.
Okay. I, let's work through this.
Supervisor Lutweller has clearly needed a break. I could use one. Could we have five minutes?
Sure.
Okay, we are back. Drew, did you have some clarity in there?
Um, well, I think I, I can, there's a few different ways that I think we could address this. You know, one piece is mostly related to the use of the term legacy as it relates to the evaluation of a proposed project. The other piece is in the way subsection five is constructed, which is sub, and I can read it if that's helpful. Okay, so.
I've got it up in front of me, but yeah, please.
So subsection five reads, during the review of the documentation submitted, a notice of application and a consent opposition letter will be sent to affected property owners, providing information about the applications and identifying the following. One, the date and time the community development director will take action on the application. So I just want to note that I'm reading the existing code section, not the proposed changes. If it's helpful, I can read the proposed changes. So or not?
You're okay.
Okay. So should I just ad lib in that planning director? Okay. So the date and time that the planning director will take action on the application. And two, the date and time when comments must be submitted to the county to be considered by the planning director prior to taking action. If qualified opposition letter is received, the planning director will deny the buffer reduction application unless the consent opposition letter is received pursuant to the exceptions as defined in paragraph six below. And then it goes on to talk about, you know, the, the authority of the planning director and the ability for anyone to appeal the planning director's decision under code section 1732080. So I think that if we want to contemplate how to resolve some of this in a different fashion than what's presented. We could establish, because in, in subsection A, so at the top of this ordinance, it says, when the following criteria is met. And then it lays out one through six, six being the exceptions to the situation. So if we were to establish a new criteria, that criteria basically saying something to the effect of no qualified opposition letter has been received. Then if we are, if any new site were to submit an application for a cultivation license, whose mature canopy is encroaching inside of that required 350-foot setback. Then if a qualified opposition, which means a neighbor who lives within 350 of the mature canopy, it has submitted an opposition letter. If qualified opposition is received, then if what we do is sort of take that out of subsection five and establish that as a criteria, that there can be no qualified opposition for a new CCL application. Then I think that that resolves the issue of even creating the potential of new sites encroaching upon 350. The only way for that to occur would be if they met the exceptions as stated in subsection six.
I like that idea. For me, that streamlines it and that makes sense.
I think that would be the, kind of the essence of what we're trying to get to here, Drew. Does the board have anything else they would like to add?
How do we say that? Do we need to crack out what that said? Margaret is over there. So we would, we would remove paragraph three regarding legacies. Well, is that your?
So I think we can remove the first part of subsection three, which refers to legacy. The second half of that was something that we proposed to try and acknowledge that historically, the review of these applications, because what we're dealing with is desktop review of aerial imagery. We can't be a hundred percent assured that the on the, the true on-the-ground distance is a hundred percent the same as the distance measured on desktop review. So we added that second part, which is sites that have an approved appendix C document with approved site configurations. Because in some cases, what we've encountered is that it looks like from an aerial image that they're 350. Or it looks like they're greater than 350. When we go out on the site, the on-the-ground distance is somewhat different due to topography or, you know, some, you know, lack of resolution from the aerial imagery. Or lack of clarity potentially in terms of staff's review of, okay, we see structures on an adjacent parcel. So then we have to reach out to the building department and or to the assessor's office to try to figure out which of those structures are a residence, if they are a legal residence and so on. So.
Will you just take out the first two sentences of three?
I mean, if, if we take out the first two sentences in three, then I guess we don't even really need to worry about, you know, kind of what I proposed earlier. Because.
What is the residence?
But we would still need to add some language to prevent a new license application from coming in. Because I guess if we take that out, then it just doesn't address it at all.
What if you just took out the word unlicensed? And you, and the definition includes sites that are licensed at the time of adoption of this ordinance. Cause that then gets rid of your unlicensed, the, the older, you know, illegal sites. And that means they're currently, they are licensed, meaning they've had that adequate time to become part of the program or not. We're just getting rid of the unlicensed part of that legacy definition. Cause you still use, the, the legacy is still referenced in the last sentence of that paragraph as well, if you just delete the first two sentences.
One thing I want to point out that may come up if, if we were to make those changes is that. And you give me your thoughts on, you know, whether, whether this captures the intent. But if, so for some individuals who were pre, let's say are currently licensed. They somehow got licensed under the original streamlining of the CCVs and they have not yet converted to the ABR. So we're talking about an upcoming renewal that's going to happen in calendar year 2025. If for whatever reason, they haven't been proactive about applying for this ABR. Because it takes roughly, you know, the better part of two months to get through, given that we have to do the notice of application. Then there's the 10 days, then they still have to get through the ABR process and then through the licensing, you know, the license issuance process. We may run into folks who were previously licensed, but whose license has lapsed due to the fact that they're, they weren't super proactive about submitting the ABR application. And so they're coming in, let's say, three weeks before their license is going to renew. Then their license is going to lapse because they haven't gotten the ABR yet. So that would be some, that would be a new piece of, you know, kind of the administrative process that we would have to struggle through.
And do I recall you saying recently that there are about 30 that are still in that ballpark?
So I thought you might have some questions about that. So I got the stats put together. According to the assistant planner who is, you know, primarily working through these CCV to ABR conversions. We have 15 remaining to convert.
15? You said 1-5?
Yep.
I have one question and it's a little bit, so when you're talking about being 350 feet from a residence. Now, does that residence have to be permitted? Does it have to be? Does it have to be?
Yes.
Yes. Hey.
Or grandfathered. So that, that's the way that, that we view it is either permitted or grandfathered, but legal.
Why don't you just say, instead of saying license and end licensing, as good insights which have been licensed in the past six months prior to the adoption of the ordinance? That would capture anyone in that frame that you're discussing.
Did you say during the last six months?
Sites which have been licensed during the last six months prior to the adoption of the ordinance.
This might not be the time to do this, but should we require them to have it permitted and not grandfathered in the, a building that's three hundred and fifty feet? Let's say you have a garage or a lean to, and they want to make that into a, a house. It's not one yet.
That scenario from my perspective would fall into the existing exceptions, and that would be new construction.
You're, you're only recognizing something that's already recognizes in some legal form as a residence.
Yes. If you were to make those significant modifications, you would have to come and pull permits for it.
Okay, good. It has to be a. And what happens if you have somebody that does an opposing letter that says they have a house, but it isn't permitted? So who wins there?
We consider that to not be qualified.
Okay. Okay.
So can you read it with the?
Do we have any other questions on the board?
I think as supervisor carpenter Harris is saying, if we can hear where staff is coming out with all the feedback they've received from us, maybe we see if we've got something to have a revised motion or a second motion.
Um, we would need to contemplate some minor changes to the last sentence of subsection three to round out that subsection.
I'm, I'm feeling like I wish I could see this in front of me. And it, for some reason, oh, five, one, isn't in Muni code unless I just can't look it up.
So agreed. It is not, um, in chapter seventeen, but if you go into Muni code under ordinances, you can pull up three, one, five, dash, eight, five, six.
They're slow at getting everything updated.
And supervisor Cox, are you talking about the part he's reading from?
Well, he's referring to sections that aren't in what we're reading from.
Right. If you look at chapter seventeen point four, three, you won't find zero, five, one, but if you go to the ordinances section of Muni code, you will find three, one, five, dash, eight, five, six.
But everything I've heard you read is in our backup material.
It's in the staff.
Right. It, it isn't.
I feel like he's referring to things I don't see. So sorry if I'm just overlooking it.
Yeah, I just haven't heard him refer to anything.
Would it be helpful if we had admin staff put it on all of the monitors for you guys to, to look at?
Yeah, sorry supervisor Cox, I, I hadn't heard him reference anything that I didn't, wasn't seen here, but I may have missed it.
No, I'm sure I'm the one missing it, but I'm still missing it. So I want to see it.
Oh, you're fine. Out of nowhere without.
Yes. Put it wherever you want.
You are changing the definition, but the definition has already been reinforced. And you can make that change today if you'd like, or you can back. It's your pleasure.
And he's coming back for a second reading.
Coming back for a second reading. So if folks have comments, then they can. You will have a comment.
Happens today, there'd be a second reading if you want to bring it back. First reading again, that just lengthens out the whole timeframe. But it's coming back.
Maybe yes, but we still do have forty people online, so. You can reopen public comment after you make the change this time if you want. I was gonna say, if, if you would, since we're making a change, you are welcome to reopen public comment if you want to allow the people online to comment on any changes we're proposing.
I think that would be good.
Could we do that now?
People are having a hard time hearing. Fix it first.
Post language. Um, Drew wouldn't mind reading it once he's worked it up. People are having a hard time hearing, so we need to speak up a little bit.
Okay. Um, so what we've been talking through is seventeen point four, three, zero, five, one, subsection A, three. And so what I have written down is that we would. I guess we're keeping that first sentence. So the buffer reduction must be for a legacy site. Legacy means sites developed for cannabis cultivation before the adoption of this ordinance. This definition includes sites which have been licensed during the last six months. Or, and or prior to the adoption of this ordinance? I don't know if we, we caught that.
But that would be the same.
So and or, or, uh.
That are licensed or have been licensed within the past six months. Sorry, have been licensed within the past six months prior to the adoption of this ordinance.
So then that, uh, third sentence reads, this definition includes sites which have been licensed during the last six months prior to the adoption of this.
Can, I'm sorry, can I see that in my head that reads wonky? It's like they had to have been licensed within that timeframe, but what you really mean is they were licensed before or up to six months before the, yeah.
But you could change, I mean, if you want to make it very clear, that you could say which are licensed or have been licensed.
Yeah.
Within this past six months prior to the adoption of the ordinance.
Agreed. Okay, thanks.
Make that change. Thank you.
Are licensed or have been licensed.
Mm-hmm.
I know we're putting you on the spot a little bit, Drew, but you feel like this is not creating another problem for you. You're covering the bases of that, those fifteen that you know are still out there and.
I always get to encounter the problems, uh, when we work through how we establish the administrative procedures related to these ordinance updates. That, that seems okay. Um, you know, certainly if, if this is the direction we go, I can try and dig through, you know, the existing projects and make sure that we don't have any conflicts to these proposed changes that are already existing. Um, so I think that that rounds out subsection three. So now we're back to essentially subsection five and the proposed changes that were presented to you all today. Do we want to try to? I guess on the spot, I'm struggling to really think all the way through the change that we're making to three and then what impact that has to, um, the process that's laid out in five, because originally my, my sort of, you know, off the cuff idea was to establish a new criteria, um, to differentiate previously existing versus currently licensed, I guess. But I think that we've actually addressed that with the changes to three, because we're no longer, what we're contemplating is no longer allowing for a legacy site to be able to apply for an ABR unless what we just established, um, is, is the scenario.
Well, you're not letting the legacy site, but additionally, you're not letting a new, a new consideration of a license apply either. If there's opposition.
Right. The only way that the legacy site could have applied for the ABR was if they met the definition of legacy. So based on the aerial, the, the review of the aerial imagery, we see that there was historic cultivation there, then they were allowed to apply for the ABR. I mean, I guess they can still apply for the ABR, but the criteria wouldn't be met. So then the next question becomes, do we want to make the criteria more clear so that it's not a, it's not viewed potentially as a discretionary decision? So one way we might address that is, you know, where we, the second half of subsection five, where we call out, you know, that essentially, so, you know, if qualified opposition letter is received, the planning director will deny the buffer reduction application unless the opposition consent slash, consent slash opposition letter is received pursuant to the exceptions in paragraph six below. But then we call out county code section seventeen, three, two, which is the appeals section, which enables anyone to appeal the director's decision to the planning commission. Um, so that could be a, a different way of resolving not having appeals over the criteria not being met versus the dis, a discretionary decision of the director to deny the application.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so from my perspective, I think we could basically say it's an incomplete application and we can't process it because the criteria haven't been met, which is no longer a discretionary decision, which then would, I hope, prevent the ability for that to be appealed to the planning commission, commission with no real tangible ability for them to make a decision based on the fact that the director was directed to deny the application because of the qualified opposition.
Agreed. So with these, I mean, the fact that we, we are doing the same thing, but we're coming at it from a different angle, really. Margaret, does this still qualify as we can fix it here and now?
Again, I, we're at the first reading. This is your chance to make those fixes. The only thing I'm looking at, um, is whether it changes it so significantly that it would have to be brought back or brought to planning commission as a zoning issue. And again, legacy has been discussed. This is totally within there. It was within, within the purview of what the planning commission could look at. I don't have any concerns proceeding forward today.
Okay. So I guess there's kind of two questions in there, because I didn't even think about it, needing to go back to the planning commission, which you have answered to be no, but can it still be today's first reading?
Yes, it can. And as long as it's within the scope of what was brought before, it's your, you have the privilege to make any changes to you wanted during the first reading. Cause that's, that's your job is to make sure it reads as you, as the board wants it, based on the recommendations of the planning commission.
So we can't change these.
I was just gonna confirm with everybody that this will, you know, the exact verbiage is going to come back for the second reading. So it's not like you're not going to have an actual decision, you know, if you feel like you're forced to make a decision today on something you might not see right in front of you as far as the hands and the those and where everything is placed.
So should we take public comment today on these kind of wholesale changes or wait for the second reading to have public comment on this?
Chair, I mean, that's up to you. You can certainly open up public comment again, uh, based upon what they've heard. We do have thirty nine, thirty nine people on.
Should I do that now?
Well, my.
Go ahead.
My recommendation is just, just because we keep, we keep circling, I would think if, if we can have one time read out, okay, now what we think we're proposing as a change. And then, um, uh, maybe we have a motion and a second, uh, for that, if there is. And then have the public comment based on, okay, now two motions before us. One is pretty different than what they had a chance to see preparing for the meeting, and now give them another chance for public comment.
Uh, disagreed on that. I would like you to, I, I would recommend and prefer that we leave slot two of motions before us open until we hear what the public has to say.
Okay. Couldn't read, I guess.
Um, would you guys like me to read the entirety of seventeen, four, three, zero, five, one, or just the sections that we're proposing to change?
Uh.
I think just the changes.
Changes.
Okay, so just to give an overview, the original item that was presented, proposed changes to subsection five, we've now incorporated changes to subsection three. So I will start by reading my notes on the changes for subsection three. So A three, the buffer reduction must be for a legacy site. Legacy means sites developed for cannabis cultivation before the adoption of this ordinance. This definition includes sites which have, which are licensed or have been licensed during the last six months prior to the adoption of this ordinance?
Correct. Mm-hmm.
So I, I just want to point out one thing as I just reread that to you all. Um, it says, this definition includes, but it doesn't say this definition is limited to. So that might be another
Oh.
change that we want to consider.
Agreed.
Definition of a legacy is sites which are.
There you go.
Includes, because you're right, that does leave it broad that there are other things that would fall under legacy. And if we're cutting it off, then we should say is instead of includes.
Mm-hmm.
Got it. Shall I reread that again? Yeah, okay. The buffer reduction must be for a legacy site. Legacy means sites developed for cannabis cultivation before the adoption of this ordinance. This definition is.
Or you could say means.
Means.
Yeah.
Okay, this definition means sites which are licensed or have been licensed during the last six months prior to the adoption and or prior to, sorry, I think I missed that one. I got it the first time, but.
Or is fine.
Okay, so sites which have, are licensed or have been licensed during the last six months or prior to.
Just or prior to the adoption of the ordinance.
During the last six months.
Right, okay, so.
Prior to, so no or.
This definition means sites which are licensed or have been licensed six months prior to the adoption of the ordinance.
Okay, I have during the last six months.
During the last six months, yeah.
Yeah.
Adoption of this ordinance.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good teamwork.
Hmm.
So. Are, are, do we, do we have two contradictory sentences, one right after the other? Legacy means something. This definition is something else.
Hmm.
Right.
So it'd just be legacy means, and then what you just read in the second sentence?
Or it's a legacy means site developed for cannabis cultivation before the adoption of this ordinance.
You should get rid of that sentence.
Right. But it's like, you, you get rid of that part and says legacy means
Yeah.
sites which were licensed or, or, you know, blah, blah, what you just read.
Right.
I would strike that sentence and just.
Mm-hmm.
So we're going to keep legacy means, strike sites developed for cannabis cultivation before the adoption of this ordinance. And then, um, we're gonna strike this definition means, so it would read legacy means sites which are licensed or have been licensed during the last six months prior to the adoption of this ordinance.
You got it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good catch.
Okay. And then there was another part?
So then, um, you know, the, I'll read the proposed changes to subsection five. During the review of the documentation, documentation submitted, a notice of application and a consent slash opposition letter will be sent out to affected property owners, providing information about the applications and identifying the following. One, the date and time that the planning director will take action on the application. And two, the date and time when comments must be submitted to the county to be considered by the planning director prior to taking action. If a qualified opposition letter is received, the planning director will schedule the item to be heard by the planning commission unless the consent opposition letter is received pursuant to the exceptions as defined in paragraph six below.
Okay, and for, for six, because I want clarity to make sure that that, that that residence at the time of an opposition letter that they, that they show proof of a permit. Right? Because that's, I mean, that's important to me because you're talking about the only reason that they can be denied is a, a, a residential structure or a legal structure. So I want it to be a residential structure. It does. Yep, it does. It does, yep, it does, and so what is, what defines that? Is there a permit at the, at the.
Legal residential structure.
Well, that's not clear enough for me because a legal, or a legal res- okay, that means there is, it is a permit that they can pull from the county that says it's permitted. Or that they're in the process of, because it's, it's gotta be clear.
So I, I would disagree with you.
Okay.
In the sense that it's not a building permit that's active.
Okay.
It's either a grandfather dwelling or a final residential structure, which we would then consider a legal residential structure. So grandfathered or final.
Okay, so grandfathers will work anytime, going back.
Yeah, it's so if it was built prior to nineteen seventy two, nineteen seventy three, I don't keep those dates totally straight in my head, but.
Okay.
A grandfather dwelling or a final.
Final.
Residential structure.
Because the, yeah, the, the legal regu- residential structure, the same, you use the same definition regardless of, okay.
Well, yeah, that's what, I just want to make it very clear, because when those come in, it did come in, right? That that was the reason, so that, and, and people will get denied for. If they're, you know, so I just want to make it clear, and if, if it is clear in there, then, you know.
And just so that I'm clear with what you're trying to gain clarity on. Um, if we receive an opposition letter.
Right.
From an adjacent property owner.
Mm hmm.
Who, based on aerial imagery, we have identified that there is a structure that is less than three hundred and fifty feet. Then that would trigger them getting the consent opposition letter. If the opposition letter was received, we would then further. Reach out to the building department or the assessor's office to attempt to determine whether or not it's a legal residential structure. Which would then make them a qualified opposer.
Or grandfathered.
They put one in first before.
Yes.
Proven, so the timing, though, that they put their opposition in is before we prove that they are legal residents. So that's, I, that's a problem too.
So we, right, so they would submit the opposition letter based on the timeline as established, so. You know, the ten, the ten business days. Um. When we receive that opposition letter, it may be very clear to us upfront. Because we've already, it's, it's a, let's say, something that's been constructed in the last couple decades. There may be a permit record, so we've already been able to go into Smart Gov and see, yep, there's a final structure, you know, and, and do our best. In some cases, it's really simple, there's one structure, there's one final structure on that APN. So it's easy for us to equate that to, okay, that's their residence, that's a legal residential structure. In other cases, there could be a variety of outbuildings, shops, and, you know, based on aerial imagery, we're not quite sure, is it this building or is it this building? You know, so that would require a little bit more um investigation by staff and then. In some cases, they have a structure or multiple structures that may not have any permit record. Because either they were never permitted or they were constructed prior to the permitting process, which would be a grandfathered residential structure.
Oh, I have a problem with that, but that's okay.
And specifically, I think, to, what I'm hearing about Supervisor Brownfield's concern is that, that. I, I might be able to submit, submit my letter of opposition for an unqualifying structure. But that opposition letter has no teeth until you confirm that it is a legal structure, legal residential structure.
And we have, and I don't, you know, I, I, at least off the top of my head, we've had maybe one or two opposition letters that have come in from. Ultimately, non-qualified opposers because they didn't have a legal residential structure.
But there is a mechanism by which that, that letter has no impact until you formalize it, which includes confirming that it's a legal residence.
Agreed.
Does that get at your concern?
It does, except that the grandfathering just, it just opens that whole can of, you know. While it's been there for fifty five years, but it's not a residence and all of a sudden I'm trying to make it residence because there's a thirty, three hundred and forty nine foot. Right, so I mean, I, how do we, is, there's no way to do that because I guess grandfathering is an important thing for structures, but. You know, for this particular case, it's like, how, yeah.
But it's, I'm sorry, but it's grandfathered as a residence.
As a residence.
Yeah, right?
Okay.
It, it's, it's grandfathered as a legal residence, not, it's a grandfathered building that you someday want to turn into.
Okay.
Right?
Was at some point.
I, I follow what you're um.
You do?
Referring to, and so, yeah, there, there might be some instances out there where there are just structures. They have no permit record.
Right.
Do we know based on aerial imagery if it's a residence or otherwise? Agreed, we might not.
So it wouldn't be one then?
So how would we then determine? Is this a resid- is this a grandfathered residential structure? Or is this some other type of grandfathered structure, I think is what you're, you're trying to clarify.
Well, I would, you say you could look at residential property tax records?
Well.
Whether you're grandfathered or permitted, if you're not paying residential property taxes, you don't, I, I would think that would be a criteria.
Now that makes sense.
What I've gathered is that um properties are assessed. Potentially whether or not they are final. So I don't know that the tax role, the tax role can't equate to a legal structure. Because they may have been built, let's say, in nineteen seventy eight, but been assessed in nineteen seventy eight. But that wouldn't be a grandfathered structure because it wasn't built prior to nineteen seventy two, nineteen seventy three.
Yeah.
So this is what we grapple with when we try to, you know, evaluate these opposition letters and projects and things like that.
Because you're shutting down a business, so that would be a very big deal, you know what I mean, to, to make sure that we, is that.
Well, in this case, you're not shutting one down, you're not letting it move forward.
Well, that is.
Letting it start, that's not shutting it down, it's not there yet.
Okay, so.
Yeah, I, I'm fine, that's good, I mean. Would you feel better if like a word was added that provided clarity to the code? Are you feeling like somebody reading this code isn't gonna know? Right, I mean, if, if the problem comes up, how do we solve it? Right, and, and that's, that's the problem, so you, you have this residence, it's questionable. He puts in an opposition letter and, you know, if we prove it, it is or is, or isn't, then it's fine, but. If I hear you correctly, your concern is that when you read legal residential structure. Are you feeling like the general public is not going to understand? What's defined, what defines that? Right, legally, because when you're talking about a legal problem that we're having here, then that legal residence, we have to make sure we know what that is.
So by legal, we mean permitted, correct?
Okay, we, yeah, and we don't have to actually add, I mean, if that's enough for everybody here. To read it that way, but what I read it, I read it legal residential structure, but what does that, you know, we're having trouble defining that.
So should we put next to legal in parentheses permitted?
No, not at all. It, I'm comfortable with the language, if it says that it needs to be a legal residential structure. Are you just feeling like maybe you want that defined in, like, again, a definitions section so that it's not a, can? Someone can't contend against that?
So I just pulled up the definitions section for seventeen point four three. And while we don't have legal residential structure, we have legal dwelling. Um, and I'll read that, legal dwelling means a building intended for occupancy as living quarters. Built prior to nineteen seventy two or that is properly permitted by the county.
So that clarifies that.
That's.
Seventy two and back, grandfather seventy two forward permitted. And dwelling would be the word we're using here.
So if we want to provide um, you know, our, our best attempt.
You could change residential structure to dwelling, so it matches the definitions section.
The only thing that jumps out.
There we go.
On legal residential structure is in subsection six, but there may be other sections that refer to legal residential structure. But legal dwelling.
So just to make it easy and possibly for you not have to go back and change nineteen different things.
Right.
Do you understand that dwelling? Is either grandfathered in pre-seventy two or permitted post-seventy two?
Well, the grandfather, you know, there's nothing, I, I guess there's nothing I can do about the grandfather, I don't like the grandfathering in because if you grandfather in that many years before. And it, it isn't actually being lived in, to me, that's not a residential structure, so, but.
So.
It is what it is, if it is, if it was ever permitted, ever permitted or is permitted as a residential structure, maybe?
Based on a quick review of.
We don't have to deal with.
This code section, um, we have two references to legal residential structure, which will be changing to legal dwelling to be consistent with the definitions. So now we're talking about making changes to two additional sections. Um, A, in the body of, you know, it basically. Buffer reductions, when deliberating a cannabis license application, a reduction from the required three hundred and fifty foot distance from an adjacent legal dwelling on any adjoining parcels may be considered. And then we have in six, the following situations are considered exceptions from the required three hundred and fifty foot distance from an adjacent legal dwelling.
Yeah.
So, yeah, let's leave, if the board would like, let's leave dwelling in there for continuity and consistency. Um, and do you, you understand the dwelling?
Yep, I understand and don't like the, the grandfather part, but there's nothing I can do about that. Okay, so if the dwelling helps me a little bit, because it's gotta be a living, a living building.
So.
Want us to make a, uh, Margaret, is it best to make a motion on this with noted changes? And then do public comment or do we do public comment?
That is your pleasure, I know there's been.
Supervisor Cox was asking if we could hold the motion for public comment in case that affected the motion.
Understood.
Since you run out of motion space.
Is she reading everything? I feel like we got interrupted with that.
I, I did read the, the subsection three, which is what we've discussed, changes. Subsection five is the changes that were presented to you all, and now we have changes to A. Um, the introductory section, subsection A, and then A six as well, where we're making reference to legal dwelling instead of legal residential.
Okay, we covered it, alright.
So CEO, do you think it would be wise for us to have a motion then public comment? Because there's thirty six people online or vice versa?
Vice versa, I would get public comment.
Okay, we are going to open up. Uh, E two for public comment. Anybody in the room? Anybody on Zoom?
Ben.
Hello again, Ben Kellag, Weaville, um, I guess I have to laugh a little bit. Um, it's twelve forty three, you guys started as a twelve o'clock roughly. It was supposed to be a small minor change and somehow we're forty three minutes into it. I've never seen in my years of watching board of supervisor meetings, something come to a board of supervisor meeting outside of Trinity County. Um, and the board completely opening the uh text up. And spending forty five minutes and changing it. You guys are on the right track when you asked county council previously, is this something that we should just vote on and then come back to? The answer should have been yes, or somehow gotten to will vote and come back to it, because from me watching this. You're having Drew do somersaults on the fly, looking at text, looking at various documents. When he realistically should have gone back and sat down thoughtfully, looked at this and come back. Perhaps us didn't need to come back to planning, but you guys are making a lot of changes and every time you make a change, there's two or three other objections. And uh it's getting to be a word salad. So I just question, you guys need to make this a simple process. And come back to what you all want in, in the end, but get this done, uh, thank you.
Thank you, any other on Zoom?
Adrian.
Thanks again, Adrian Keyes from Hayfork, um, yeah, I, I kind of agree with that, I, this is becoming like somewhat opaquely confusing. Um, I, I understand it's not a requirement legally to. To send this back to planning or any of that sort of thing, but I think that it, it would be. Uh, I think there's a chance that regardless of what happens today, this, this, if there is any conflicts in the language, it will have to be amended anyway. And since we haven't really had an opportunity to do any real thinking about it. It, it seems that that's likely to, to need to be changed in the future, so I would hope that the board could move to. Adopt as written and direct staff to come back with a proposal for what you're asking them to do on the fly right now. Because it's, it's really confusing, it's very difficult to follow and the uh long-term impacts are, are not gonna have an opportunity to be considered, thank you.
Thank you, any other on Zoom?
Veronica.
Veronica Kelly Alby, Dead the City, um. I, I want to say that I, I appreciate you all really looking at it to find a way to make sure that it doesn't become something that has to keep coming back for, for adjustments. And you're looking at it from all angles, both from the cannabis industry side as, as well as the process for those that are not within the industry. Um, and it is getting a little extended and trying to catch up and, uh, but it is the first reading. So even if you're adopting something now and you feel like you need to change it the next time, you still have that opportunity and the public still has the opportunity to weigh in. And I appreciate you trying not to drag it out and trying to find a fix now and thoughtfully researching, asking questions. To try and get it right for everybody involved, so I, that's my say on it, is that, you know, you guys are really digging in. Finding a way to make it work so that it doesn't have to keep coming back, and I appreciate that, thank you.
So Drew, without uh knowing that you encompassed everything in the world in that motion we're gonna make. Do you feel thoroughly confident that uh the motion that we're gonna vote on here? Uh, encapsulates everything that we should be in this, this subject?
Um, so the reason I just stood up is that some of that public comment. Made me think about, you know, what outliers might exist um that might pose other future problems for us. Or that would not be entirely consistent with the changes that we're making. Um. I can think of at least one site which. Is a new CCL application or has never been previously licensed. However, it has been working on obtaining a license leading up to program shutdown, so let's say four plus years. They, because based on our previous administrative process to review aerial imagery. They had evidence of legacy cultivation as currently defined. They went through the ABR process, they had one neighbor who their proposed mature canopy. You know, encroached upon the required three hundred and fifty foot setback. They did not receive opposition. And that project is now in, stuck in an appeal cycle. So the administrative buffer reduction director's use permit has been issued. We also have other ones that perhaps are not stuck in an appeal cycle, but could have recently, let's say in the past several weeks. Received the approval of the director's use permit, but it would not, they would still not qualify. Under how we just defined or mo- are proposing to potentially modify legacy. Because they are not, they have not been previously licensed, however, they might have just recently gotten the approval of their director's use permit. I don't have a good solution to that scenario, but just wanted to make you all aware that, that we will have to figure out, you know. For a couple sites potentially, what impact these proposed changes might have, given that they've already received the director's use permit. So they would just proceed, I guess, because they were approved under the pre-existing.
Mm hmm.
Code section. Um, and then for any other sites that have applied for the administrative buffer reduction. Director's use permit, but have not been finalized, so what happens then? Let's say if we go forward with these more involved changes today, we bring it back in two weeks for a second reading. Then it doesn't go into effect for thirty days. What does that mean for those that are already in the queue? That are being processed under the existing code section? But let's say they get through the ABR DUP process, but they still haven't been licensed in forty five days. When this proposed language could take effect. Not that we need to address the answer to that question now, but just to make you all aware that. There likely are a couple outliers that fall into that.
So I, I guess my opinion here would be to. Approve E two as, as written and then give you a couple of weeks to. a couple weeks to kind of button up those loose ends and see what you can think of that may come down the road. In some of the things you just pointed out, you know, I want to make sure that we get this right, don't have to keep coming back to it, as we seem to have done in the past. And with a wholesale kind of change like this, Drew, I think that might be the best way to go, get it right here, bring it back. Even though it might take a little bit more, I'd rather have it right than hurried, and not have the public fully understand what we're trying to do here.
Is there...
Chair may make a suggestion? So, why don't we just continue this item until the next meeting? We'll make, we'll make all the adjustments that have been discussed here, put it in writing, go through, do a little bit more analysis on maybe affected sites. It'll be two weeks later, yes, but we'll have a better complete discussion at that two weeks, and you'll have actually verbiage that'll be written, public can see that, we can have a discussion in this forum, and then make decisions based upon that.
I think that's a good path moving forward.
Is there any... Make a motion?
Is there any reason, Drew, that that's gonna cause significant problems between now and the next board meeting?
No, I don't think so. I mean, my thinking would just be that, you know, essentially, what was being presented would be the same, there'd just be an additional attachment, and maybe some changes to the body of the staff report to reflect these, you know, changes that you've all have contemplated today, and so it would be primarily the same, but...
The other thing that's gonna let you do is sleep on it a little bit, because things come to mind as you consider, and that could be helpful.
I think it's good, too, that the public gets to sleep on it a little bit. You know, we brought up a bunch of different things that weren't in E2. I think they're all good things, but they need to be kind of fettered out, not just by us, but by the public in general. So, I think it's, I think CEO Thudhill's recommendation is a good recommendation, we should go with it.
And what this just translates into, because again, this was a first reading, there would be a second reading, anyway. But this just means that the ordinance as it stands will be what is law for the next two weeks. So, if another one came up that fell into the same category, it's going to be handled, has to be handled the same way. But you're not anticipating something like, I know, you don't have a crystal ball, but you're not anticipating something like that happening, that because we wait, we're creating another potential problem.
But it wouldn't change anything, anyway, because you have to have two readings in 30 days before you would change the ordinance anyhow.
I'm just saying it delays it two weeks.
Yeah.
No, I don't generally know. It just crossed my mind, another scenario that would be impacted by these proposed changes, because we have an existing licensed cultivator who wants to encroach into the 350. And they received an opposition letter, I believe, in the last few days, or... So, if we get an appeal of the director's decision to deny, then that will be another, you know, odd scenario, but nothing that's, you know, impacted. I mean, it is what it is currently, and it will continue to be so until any changes go into effect, so...
Okay.
Can I? Is that a question for you? She asked a question for you, yeah.
Pleasure. I don't, I'm not opposed to continuing it, I think that makes good sense, give us all a little bit more time to consider it and read it through multiple times, and let the public read it as well, so that's perfectly fine with me.
And county council, if I just may, so, if we approve it as it, if we had approved it as is today, there would still be a second reading?
Correct.
Okay? If we approve it as revised today, there will still be a second reading?
Correct.
And if we put it off for two weeks, there will still be a second reading?
Correct.
So, I'm gonna make a motion, it can not get seconded, it not get supported, but I'm just gonna make a motion that we move forward with the changes that Drew led us through that reflect the wishes of this board, and approve that now, with knowing that we will have a second reading, and if it has to be revisited because people slept on it and people thought about it for another two weeks, then we change it next time. Versus just waiting another two weeks when we just spent 45 minutes working through. So, that's just my motion.
I did, I was the second.
Motion second? Go ahead.
I just want to clarify, did we have an official motion to continue it?
No.
No.
Okay, so, the only two motions on the table are approved, this one as amended or the original? Thank you.
Yeah, and I guess we should leave if somebody wants to make a motion to continue.
Do we have, can we have three motions? I would like to make a motion that we continue until this can be brought before us for the second board meeting, that things have been gone through and revised.
I would second that.
We didn't want to make this easy on you, Leah.
Absolutely not.
Going to go with the motion to continue.
The first motion that you're calling is for the motion to continue?
Mm-hmm.
Supervisor Gogan?
Could you read the motion, please?
The motion to continue to...
Two weeks from now.
Yes.
Yes.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Litwiler?
No.
Supervisor Cox?
No.
Supervisor Brownfield?
No.
Now, we are going to move to...
Motion to adopt as rewritten by our staff during the discussion.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Litwiler?
Aye.
Supervisor Brownfield?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
Thank you, Drew.
Good, thank you.
Yeah.
Gotta close out the meeting.
Getting ready. Are we ready? So, we're gonna, we're gonna report out on closed session from our meeting two weeks ago. Government Code Section 54954.5C, Conference of Legal Counsel, Existing Litigation, Trinity County Superior Court, Case Number 2.21 CV02248-JAM-DMC, direction was given. And... Yeah, the second one, Government Code Section 545454954.5E, Threat to Public Services and Facilities, Consultation with Trinity County Sheriff, No Reportable Action. And we are now... Preserved. Unless you have something else to say, Drew?
Thank you for...